Are we ready? And call order to the Planning Commission of February 18th, 2020. We're going to roll call, please.
Vice Chair McCainy?
Here.
Chair Moore?
Here.
Commissioner Hancock?
We have approval amendments of the Kattati Planning Commission meeting, a regular meeting of January 21st, 2020. Any changes or amendments?
No, I'll propose... I'll propose to accept them.
Can you make a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept them, sorry.
I'll second.
Okay, can you roll call, please?
Vice Chair McCainy?
Yes.
Chair Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Hancock?
Yes.
Any changes to the agenda? Seeing none, we'll go on to oral and written communications. The public is asked to please step to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Please omit your comments to items not already agendized for discussion. Seeing none, I will close public hearing and go to matters at hand. Our first item is economic development strategy and implementation program ordinance workshop.
Thank you Chair Moore and members of the commission. As you identify, there are no public hearings this evening. The only item is the Economic Development Implementation Strategy Project. And this meeting is being held in a workshop format, so as I mentioned, we're not making any decisions. This is just a discussion session. The intent is to have a presentation from our consultants, who I'll introduce in a moment, regarding their work over the last six months on this project, to clarify any questions that may come up from the public or from the commissioners as a part of that presentation and to essentially take a lot of notes. We really want to hear input from the commission and the public as to whether the scope of what is being proposed is adequate to meet the goals, if there's any concerns from any specific elements from the commissioners or the public that should be addressed through further revisions. And as mentioned, we have the consultants who are Dick and Mike Loki from Loki Planning Associates. They're the city's consultants on this project. They're going to lead on the presentation. But after the presentation is completed, myself and the city manager, Mr. Obed is here, as are the consultants, to answer any specific questions. So we're trying to give you the full team to answer any questions that might arise after this information is presented. Please bear with us. I'm going to be operating the laptop while our consulting team over here presents. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Dick and Mike. And as I mentioned, we'll be taking lots of notes and are eager to hear your inputs.
Thank you, Noah. Good evening, everyone. I'm Dick Loki. It's an honor to be here with you this evening. We've spent a great deal of time, first, absorbing and learning about the community, about policies, about constraints, both environmental, political, and especially economic. And what we're here to do with you this evening is give a short presentation, and I do mean I'm going to attempt to be very brief, and allow as much time as we can for you commissioners to ask questions of all of us here and for us to, as Damian and, excuse me, Noah has already explained, take careful notes because we expect to have follow-up work to be done. So just to frame the purpose of what we're here to talk about, I was first contacted by Damian with an expression of interest and really a series of conversations that focused on what's possible in terms of stimulating economic development here in the downtown area. We're not talking about bringing big box stores to Kattati. This is really fine-grained. And it's all about trying to capture some of the business leakage that goes on to the north and south of you, trying to strengthen the businesses that are already here and to create opportunities to make it easier, faster, and more efficient for businesses to set up shop in Kattati and to be sustainable over time. As we all know, where it's a different economy today. It's a world of internet shopping. And so those businesses that are experiential, both dining and specialty retailing and specialty fabrication even, craftsman shops, those are the kinds of businesses that, in connection with offices and housing, create the kind of building blocks that are sustainable over time, going forward with the constraints, not only on internet shopping, but the competition that occurs all around you. The good news, as we learned from the economists that the city hired to lay the groundwork before we got started, is there's a lot of demand. There's a lot of unmet need in Kattati, whether it's getting dinner here in town or having an opportunity to walk downtown and take full advantage of being able to shop at different stores and to spend more time in the downtown. I also want to recognize that as the further we got into this program, the more we understood the unique character of Kattati, some of the rich history of development of policy to protect your identity, your character, and at the same time, within that context, to look at new opportunities. So the first thing we did was identify a... Could we go back a slide, Noah, to the overall map? First thing we did was take a look at our land resources. We have the downtown area on the east side of 101, including a segment up towards where the Gravenstein... Above where the Gravenstein Highway connects. And then there's a larger group of properties on the east side that are, I'll say for... West side, excuse me. For lack of a better term, underdeveloped. There's a lot of land resource opportunities there. So our focus, several people have asked us, why are you looking beyond the immediate downtown as reflected in our adopted specific plan? It's because that, the implementation of that plan and the opportunity to capture retail trade and strengthen the businesses in the downtown can be augmented pretty substantially if we get the right mix of activity on the west side of 101 and have them work together in a complementary way. So this was an evolutionary process where we not only inventoried property, but we began to take a closer look, next slide, at those properties that are substantially developed, where we have existing businesses, and properties that are undeveloped or underdeveloped is the right term. And what you're going to hear in terms of a presentation from us tonight focuses on what it was that we learned about this inventory of available properties, what we learned from all of the stakeholder interviews that had taken place before we started, both by city staff and the economists that were working with the city, and the in-depth interviews that we conducted with the major property owners in the area. Admittedly, we couldn't reach everybody, but we got to about nine or 10 of those major property owners and learned quite a bit about their efforts over a very long period of time to entitle projects and not just interfacing with you folks here in the city, but with the resource agencies and dealing with the economy, the cost of development and where demand is and where it isn't. From there, we developed an opportunities and constraints analysis. We looked, on the one hand, to those businesses that might do well here in downtown Kattati in our strategy area. And we looked at some of the things that have occurred and are still occurring that become barriers to those uses being established. Things like environmental resources that are present that have to remain protected, things like high cost of frontage improvements and traffic control, and of course, the development regulations the city has itself. And we then moved to some preliminary recommendations for an implementation strategy, looking at those things, first of all, that we could, together as a community, implement. And we'll talk about those in detail this evening. And those things that are a bit more involved and time-consuming that we identified as possible future steps. So the focus tonight is to look at these implementation strategies that are written out and enumerated in different, what we call toolboxes. We group them together in different categories. And so to begin with, as you look at these properties that make up this strategy area, you'll see that we have, of course, the several different zoning classifications that make up the downtown specific plan area. And then we have the Gravenstein Corridor Commercial Zoning District. And we have an industrial commercial district immediately to the north of that along the west side of 101. We also have roughly 15 acres sandwiched in between that is general planned for commercial activity, but has no pre-zoning on it. It's within your sphere of influence, but right now, there's no pre-zoning on the property. So again, my goal this evening is to introduce you to these topics and then allow us to have an exchange of ideas, questions, where we can get into greater depth on the specifics. One of the first things that I want to mention briefly, and I won't get into the weeds just yet on it, is that once we've identified the full range of possible implementation tools, everything from pre-zoning to code amendments to some streamlining of procedures, all these little things that work together to help stimulate economic development, we had to look at that as a project under the California Environmental Quality Act. And so we prepared what's called an initial study, which critically looks at the potential for each of these elements on their own and in combination to adversely affect the physical environment. And we found that while some of these can influence the environment, none of them create changes that would compromise environmental resources or create impacts on their own. And so what you have in front of you is a draft, what's called negative declaration, a finding of no significant environmental impact. Again, this is a draft, and we're during... We're in the middle of a review period that the city provided notice running 45 days for. So there's lots of opportunity for people to comment on that, if they agree or disagree. The second group of things that we worked together on were recommended changes to the code. And I'll break that down for you in just a minute. Most of these changes affect those zoning districts within the strategy area. But a couple of them go beyond the immediate zoning districts in the strategy area because they're applicable to other districts within the city that have similar conditions. So you'll see in some of the documents, yellow and red highlighting that's the difference. The only zoning map change that we considered as part of this program coming before the city right now, again, was a pre-zoning of roughly 15 acres that is part of that Gravenstein Corridor area. Very briefly, I'd like to mention that the next round of work, in addition to those ideas that commissioners and the public may offer for us to think about, is we have identified the need to get into some of the definitions in the zoning ordinance for greater clarity. And that takes care and time to complete. So we've listed it as a possible future action item. Same thing with performance standards and how accessory uses work. There are some fairly simple changes that are part of the recommended code amendments before you, but there are additional performance standards to be written. From a big picture standpoint, what we're trying to accomplish here is to make it more understandable and essentially a more streamlined process for a business operator to come to town and say, I want to open a restaurant here. They need to know what process they follow. They would love it if we could give them some early feedback on what that process is, what the city's requirements are. And to the extent that we can share information about things like biological resource constraints, improvements that they'll need to complete, that'll help them determine early on in the process whether it's going to be a feasible project for them. They don't waste money, spend time, and end up frustrated. Instead, it helps to channel and focus projects that will work. I think as part of the future program amendments, we also should look at the process for annexation of those 15 acres and possibly some of the policy language in the general plan, particularly when we look at how housing works together with retail. You'll hear us talk tonight a little bit about mixed-use projects. And yes, some flexibility has been written into the code amendments that allow, from a design standpoint, a little more flexibility on how residential and retail work together. But it's still predominantly a commercial frontage on the street. But that added flexibility, based on the feedback we've received from a variety of professionals and business interests, is important to make projects feasible. So we started this program last summer in June and July. We went through kind of a learning curve, conducted interviews, developed some initial ideas, tested them towards the fall. And as we approached the late fall, we drafted a set of regulations and we had exchange with staff to flush out ideas. And what's been presented to you is the culmination of a lot of thinking that is the draft set of recommendations. What we'll be doing after this meeting tonight is taking your comments, analyzing them, and returning at a public hearing before you, the commission, and then after that to the city council. I want to stop my presentation right now so I don't put you all to sleep. I do want to emphasize that as you get into the details, which I think between Noah, Michael, and myself will probably share trying to answer questions on. For example, as we get into the code amendments, you'll see some subtle changes where some additional uses have been put into the permitted use category. Some in particular have been put into the minor use permit, that is, staff-level use permit process to expedite them if they're straightforward and if there's coherent standards to guide how those should be reviewed. And in addition, the process for evaluating applications has been streamlined. One of the things we tried to do was look at some straightforward language changes in the design review process, not to change what's reviewed or how it's reviewed, but to make the process a little bit more objective and to make sure that the SEQA process, the environmental review process, is conducted on a parallel track with the discretionary review permits. It's important to understand that when an application becomes a discretionary permit, one which can be approved or denied because of compatibility, for example, that triggers environmental review, and it's much more complicated. By and large, design review, based on policies in your general plan, is intended to be an objective process where standards get followed. And if they're followed correctly, the expectation is that the design review would be approved. So those are my opening remarks. And I think before we go any further, I'd like to ask, unless Noah is thinking of something that I may have missed in the opening part, I'd like to ask what questions you may have, and I'm sure we'll want to hear from the public as well.
Yeah, I'll just add briefly, there were a few comments that came in. We were able to get all the comments. There's four individual... I'm sorry, three individual comments that came in. We were able to get copies of those to the commission before the meeting. So you have those on the dais. There's copies available for the public in the back. So just wanted to point that out as I failed to do it when I first introduced the item.
Yes, so we're going to go through our overall...
Well, I think they're just asking for clarif... Are you just asking for clarification right now of what you just spoke about?
Well, before we move into discussion of the toolboxes, which are the specific recommendations, I wanted to just pause and see if there were any kind of overall program comments or questions any of you had that we might be able to answer as context. I think the next thing that we'd like to do is review with you these individual toolboxes that have the nuts and bolts of the recommendations in them.
Well, I would think that we have a lot of comments and questions on this. At some point, I think it'll all be numerous, from at least the commission's side. And I know we have a semi-full house, which is nice. So I think the audience is going to be wanting to comment on this also. I don't have anything right now. You did mention just one thing. You said the review and then the permits. So I think is that... Those are separate. You were talking about, because some of the permits are going to be... And when I looked at, when I read this, they're going to be minor use permits instead of regular CUP, you know, conditional use permits. That's all changing. But then you said something about, your last statement about that it's... I can't remember now. Am I having a brain freeze here?
Yeah, so I'll just jump in to add to Dick's comments on... So the design review portion of the code?
Yeah, exactly. That's what I'm saying.
Currently, it references... Makes reference to elements of use. And so from a staff standpoint, that's somewhat unclear because if the use is permitted, but the requirement is that a new development or some substantial modification of an existing building requires design review, but the design review ordinance talks about element of use, then that actually muddles what the process is really intended to do. And frankly, I've worked in some environments that are a little bit more litigious than Kattati. And I'm happy to be in a less litigious environment. But when there's code language that is less than clear as to what the intent of what you're trying to do or maybe elements of another discretionary action are inserted into, in this case, design review, that does not help, A, facilitate decision-making, but it also muddles what really the intent of the process is. And so with the design review changes specifically, the intent is to pull out any references to use, given that the use is a permitted element per our code. And the intent of that discretionary item is purely design-related. So I think as we get into some of the specifics, that'll translate very clearly.
Yeah, I didn't quite understand what you were saying because I know, you know, one's permitted use and one's, you know, designer view. I mean, I know that they're separate, so...
Another way to look at this is that design review occurs much more frequently because whether something is a permitted use or it requires a use permit, many times you still need designer view if there's new construction. So what Noah's explaining here is that the design review process should be independent and it should be based on compliance with standards. Whereas the discretionary review, the use permit, major or minor, that requires public hearings, it requires a balancing judgment. And so the language changes in the code are just to make sure that we've separated those processes clearly enough. When you have designer view and a use permit, they go on together. But in many cases with a permitted use, you don't need to get into those use functions when doing designer view.
And I would just add, we may still have public hearings on the design, but we want the kind of the question posed before the commission and the public to be specific to design if the use is a permitted element first, based on the code. And so as again, as we look to the code, you'll see what we're talking about and what the intent is.
Thank you for that clarification.
So on that also, we've changed the context of the design review so it's more ministerial now. It used to be that there was a design review committee that came through. But now we have this as a ministerial. But you're suggesting that it's still not very clear as to when it comes forward, as to how the applicant is going to put that forward.
Another way of looking at it, whether a design review is conducted at the staff level, in front of a design review board, the planning commissioner, even appealed to the council, design review should be a ministerial process. By that, I mean there isn't a judgment involved as to whether it's something that's compatible or not. That's use. Instead, it's an evaluation to make sure that the architecture, the compliance with parking, the circulation, all of those elements that make up the design of the site and the buildings meet your standards. And by doing that, it allows us to keep the process simplified when the use is permitted. And we found that as we were looking at, in addition to a restaurant or even signage in some cases, that by making sure that we treat that design review as a ministerial process, it allows it to go forward much more efficiently with less time and less burden on the applicant as well as the city.
So can you just give us some examples of the current code that does that? Because I mean, I thought it was very much a design review ministerial process. And I understand what you're talking about. But what are the... Is that the next phase where we actually get examples?
That's correct. So the next section of the presentation is the actual code changes. And again, I think once you see... I mean, it even references use in the design review language. I think once you see that and the intent is discussed, it'll become a lot more crystal clear.
Okay, I just had another question. The way that you're phrasing it, you're phrasing that there's a downtown area and then a commercial general that's on the west side. Because those have been traditionally... There's been more of an intent, if possible, to have a character by having the downtown area that would develop.
So the recommendations that we have put forth here don't change the character or the basic permitted uses in the downtown area. The Gravenstein Corridor, Gravenstein Commercial Corridor along 116 is a different zoning district. There are different permitted uses. And we looked at these separately, but we looked at both with an eye towards what kind of businesses do we want to promote here? Which businesses are going to be sustainable over time? And it comes back to having the flexibility to combine in mixed-use projects, housing and commercial activities, with a focus on trying to attract those experiential uses like restaurants, craftsmen stores, retail activities in particular, where people can come and see unique things rather than the day-to-day retail activity that you otherwise can go on the internet to meet your needs for. And so we think with these changes, we're not going to ever get to the point of fully capturing all the retail trade that Kattati could have. But we think there's an opportunity to strengthen the businesses that are already here and to support some additional uses to make it a much more vibrant and active place, both socially and retail-wise.
Thank you.
Okay. That's, I think, all the questions we had so far.
So to begin with, I'd like to talk a little bit about our first toolbox, A, changes to the zoning code, having to do with expediting the process. And Noah, could we jump ahead to slide 10? Thank you. So to begin with, we spent some time... So, to begin with, we spent some time looking at the process and resources that have been brought to bear in the pre-application process, and one of the things we heard at length from people we interviewed is that the pre-application process wasn't always completely reliable, and I'm, my comments this evening are not meant to be critical of anybody, these are simply the comments we heard as real feedback, both from businesses and property owners in particular, because one of the things we're trying to do here is stimulate activity. So we wanted a more robust pre-application process where department head-level feedback is provided, it occurs quickly, it's either free or minimal cost, and it addresses in substance the issues having to do with whether the use being contemplated is permitted or not, what process will have to go through, and what some of the issues are. Are there environmental issues having to do with wetlands, for example? Are there substantial hidden costs that we know about in terms of infrastructure, traffic control, and those things? We hope to flush all of that out in the pre-application process. We also want to give applicants some guidance early on about the SEQA process. Do they have to go through a SEQA review, or is it an exempt project? That's important, and if you're not armed with that kind of information as a small business operator, it can be a terrible surprise to learn halfway through the process. This is also an opportunity to encourage applicants to consider inclusion of certain elements that maybe they didn't consider, whether it's a specialty type of retail, or having an ample supply of parking when we know that parking in the area is deficient. And so the process for preparation and filing of applications has some additional language in it that addresses all of those issues, and our expectation is that this won't be a complete fix. On the other hand, it is designed to get more accurate information in the hands of people who need it quicker, so that when they do engage in the formal application for a use permit, and they go through that environmental impact review process that can take six months to a year, they know it's coming, and they know what the issues, at least they have a good handle on what the issues will be, and I had probably three or four property owners say to us, and without throwing anybody under the bus on either side of the fence, that it is a nightmare to spend a quarter million dollars, take six months, and not know whether the use that you want to pursue is one that the city can approve or not, and literally that was said to us, and we don't want to let that happen, because when that message gets out to the business community, it's like putting cold water on a small fire that's just beginning to grow. We want to, we want to build that flame into successful applications, ones that will lead to projects that are well-received in the community, and that make economic sense in the marketplace, and we've had some guidance along the way from the city's economic consultants at Grun &amp; Grun, that's been helpful as well.
I would just add, staff sees this as kind of formalizing a pre-application process to encourage folks to come in, and allow us to point to this as a mechanism of encouraging people to come in to talk about their projects early, before they get too far invested, and this also, if you look on page 19 of your packet, it includes this pre-application conference into our permit processing, kind of formalizing it and just saying, hey, this is available, and it includes a written letter, so that way folks can have something in writing to get feedback from staff for little or no cost. We already do this process informally, but this is just codifying it to allow folks to know that we can point, and allow us to point to it, say we do it.
So, Toolbox B has to do with--
Could we, could we just ask any questions on Toolbox A? If that's--
So the process is really is, we have a lot to go through, so we have numerous toolboxes to go through tonight, and so I'm going to ask our commissioners, do you want to do each individual, or do you want to do all of them and then ask our questions and then have public, we're not, we're not doing any, any kind of voting tonight on this or anything, this is all just opened up for questions, so I'm just trying to get a read.
I'm, I mean, I'd go for each toolbox, because they're actually quite complicated, and there are, whether or not we should open it up for public comment after each toolbox, I don't--
Well, if we're going to be questioning it and asking questions ourselves, then I would prefer that we open it up for public comment after each one--
Right.
But if we're going to do all of them, and then ask our questions, have them run through all of them and then write down our questions, I think that, and then open up our public hearing, might expedite the process.
I'm happy doing each toolbox, because--
Okay, then if we do each toolbox, then I'm going to open it up for public hearing on each toolbox. And so we just ran through Toolbox A, if anybody would like to speak on that?
Okay, I'd like to ask a question.
Okay, go ahead.
So, on the Toolbox A, you've got, "Review the city's approval process," is that somebody comes in, and then you sit down with them and say, this is what's going on, because it sounds like at the moment that you're saying you have to go back and review the city's approval process? So this is on page 18, item number two.
So that's current language in the code, and so the highlight is, "and design review" added, and then they crossed out possible project alternatives or modifications, which I appreciate, because it's not staff's job to try to direct or design a project for someone, however, we will provide feedback on the process. So specific to these, the highlights are new language, the black is existing language, and then obviously the red strikeout is proposed to be removed.
So it's an application preparation filing, the application comes in, and you sit down with them, and then review what it takes for the city's approval and design review process that they will have to go through?
That's correct, except it may not even be a formal application, it may just be a concept that someone wants to discuss.
Right, okay, then on item number five, you've got, "clarify the timeline," as new, is that determine the timeline?
So, folks who are in the audience may have heard me say this, but I don't ever commit to any decision timeframes until we have issues worked out. However, I do spend a lot of time with applicants upfront to let them know the average timeline it takes for a project, and the things we anticipate based on what they've told us that could add or maybe expedite their process. So like, as an example, is, some folks will choose to file an application requesting whatever their project is, wait the 30-day review time for the city to then tell them they need a traffic study, or a biologic assessment, or something along those lines, whereas other folks who take advantage of this, if they were, as an example, proposing to develop a property on the west side of town, we would be able to tell them, we know that there are numerous biologic issues on that side of town and traffic, and so we will be requiring a traffic study and a biologic assessment on any application, and this is assuming it's upscale, proposing to develop there, so you should come in with that ahead of time to allow additional review early of that information, rather than waiting for us to tell you that you need it. Does that make sense?
Well, sort of, but on the one hand, you're saying clarify the timeline, make it more, but if you want something there, you've got a maximum of 30 days, if the, where does that maximum of 30 days comes in?
So that exists in state law, so once someone files an application, it creates what's called a shot clock, and that's a term in the state legislature that requires us to respond within 30 days, so that's Dick and Mike taking advantage of what the state has already told us we're supposed to do, to codify it in our, in our process, just to provide a little bit more formality for the interested folks.
Okay, thank you.
Brittany?
Uh, yeah, just one addition, first of all, the examples are really helpful for me, thank you, it helps me kind of wrap my head around how this will all work out, and then I just wanted to make sure I'm understanding this correctly, so when I'm reading the summary, it says that we'll be doing the filing requirements by expediting a more complete review, and so that to me says we're going to kind of move things along more efficiently, but am I correct in understanding that really we're going to do more upfront with folks to make sure there's a clear understanding of what's feasible, what may not be feasible, what might be challenging, and as a result, we'll see a more expedited or efficient process?
That's absolutely the intent.
Okay, great, thank you.
Great, if anybody else would like to speak on this? Opened up. Okay, seeing none, we're going to close that, and move on to Toolbox B.
Toolbox B addresses permitted and conditional uses, and uses that are not allowed because they're not listed. Again, the focus is on principally on those zoning districts that are within the boundaries of our strategy area, and what you'll see in the table in Toolbox B is a series of letters, P for permitted, MUP for minor use permit, UP for use permit. Where it's highlighted in yellow, we've added it or modified it, and you'll see in some cases a strikeout of what was in place, so for example, under artisan craft product manufacturing, something that's come up repeatedly as an interest item, in the CI zoning district, a minor use permit had been required for that activity, and the recommended change is to make it permitted by right. Doesn't mean that it doesn't have to comply with development standards and other design standards, but it's an activity that falls into a category that's so similar to others that we felt it could be made permitted. These in particular oftentimes are small uses, and that same use in the CG zoning district went from a major use permit to a staff level or minor use permit. We have enough information in the code having to do with parking and other development standards, where we had a comfortable understanding that this could be administered at the staff level, with appeal, of course, to the commission by an applicant or a member of the public if they were not happy with the outcome, but the idea where there are clear standards is to expedite the process of review, and with artisan craft manufacturing, we felt that that was a good opportunity. There's a few cases where we went the other direction, particularly if a use was one that didn't support economic development in this people-activity area, where a use permit was added, but just a few of those. And so, there's also a red or salmon color you'll see in some of the blocks, and these are districts outside of the strategy area, again, noted in, highlighted in red, and again, using the example of artisan craft product manufacturing, we introduce that with a minor use permit in the CD zoning district. So, there are a series of changes, Noah and Michael are, kind of have a, they're finger on the pulse of many of the details, and so if you have, you commissioners or the public have questions about the reasoning for some of these changes, they'll help me in providing answers. By and large, we looked at every single use category and said, is this a problematic category in terms of external impacts in the downtown area of traffic, of noise, of compatibility, what's been our experience, what do we anticipate, and is there a way of still managing control over some of those externalities, and yet speeding up the process? And the minor use permit was kind of a key element in trying to expedite things.
Do you want to ask some questions?
Absolutely, as I say, this is probably one of the more, where a lot of specifics, really, you know, there's a lot of mechanics here, so we're happy to answer any questions you have, and there's probably a lot. I would just say, staff tried to look at things based on the overall intent of the zoning district, so when you read the zoning code at the very beginning, it talks about what that district is intended to do, similarly, the general plan has descriptions of what the general plan designations are intended to do, so staff, when working with the consultants, looked at each of these districts and each of the, the specific uses through that lens, and that was the goal and how we came to this, but obviously we're eager to hear some input from the commission and the public.
Do you want to go first? Okay, so I have a few. So, restaurant outdoor dining is now going to be a permitted use in downtown commercial, which I can appreciate that, what about the right-of-way use for the sidewalks that are downtown, that some have been grandfathered in, some haven't? How's that work?
So the encroachment permit to have your sidewalk cafe is still required, you still have to meet all the prescriptive requirements, the insurance requirements, all those things, however, given that we have all of those safeguards in place, do we also need to put you through a discretionary review for that? And we came to the determination that we do not.
Okay. My other question is tasting rooms is now permitted, and I know we don't have a tasting room in town, we used to, but what's the, what's, why are we permitting that now?
So, we made one change to the tasting rooms, and we allowed that in certain districts, the reason why is if you go to the definition for tasting room, it includes cheeses and other products, which you might find at Oliver's Market, or, you know, if they wanted to have samples there, so because of the definitions currently, you wouldn't be allowed to do that per the code, but by adding a tasting room into the land uses, you can allow the cheese tasting and the other, you know, incidental uses.
And I would just say, you know, from, from my perspective, we're looking for things that essentially you can't get on Amazon, you know, to kind of summarize it, and so, right now, you know, I would be frankly terrified as a retailer because of the changing dynamics, and so we're trying to allow a streamlined process for certain uses that we see is likely to not be problematic, that may have additional other regulations, you know, from the state, or maybe from the fire department as an example, alcohol beverage control would be one for tasting rooms, that would already be in place and that they'd be forced to meet, that would serve to minimize some of the impacts, and essentially not have someone go through a discretionary process for something that's already regulated and has a chance to fill up some empty storefronts downtown, essentially.
You have another one, extended hour retail, a lot of these were put in place as conditional use permits, alcohol beverage sales, I mean, I really can go all the way through. The ones that were changed because conditional use permits came to us, as a small town, and the commission saw that, and then we vetted out what hours and a lot of the details around that as a commission, and now it's really all those, MUPs would go directly to be over the counter, am I correct?
They are a staff-level decision, however, they are discretionary, and the code still allows the director to elevate any proposed minor use permit to the planning commission.
Okay. All right, that's all I have for now, David?
I'd like to ask a more fundamental or educational question, I mean, we have this complexity that's here, so could you go through what it is that that complexity was designed for? So what are these different corridors and districts? And to some degree, what is working in these districts? That's what I was hoping this would do, because I know, I'm certainly, even though I've been, I've been seeing some of these over the years, the actual intent of the districts, what is working in them, and perhaps what isn't? Can you, can you suggest this flavor? I mean, maybe this is too long for this discussion, but you mentioned there is a definition already for these districts, but we don't have that in here.
So, as I mentioned, each individual code section has a definition, but just a good way to summarize it would be, if you look at--
Perhaps we could bring up a map of, while we're doing it, of those districts? Perhaps we could bring up a map while we're doing it of those districts.
So one interesting thing that I think was interesting to me, so if you look at, and I don't have a pointer, but if you look at basically the downtown area...
The Red, the historical core?
Not just, but all of the downtown as identified in the downtown station plan. Specific plan, I'm sorry. There are four different essentially zoning categories within, or maybe three, I'd have to look at the code, I'm sorry, I was in the process of getting there. There's four, I'm sorry. Within the downtown specific plan. Generally, the code looks, that code is essentially form-based. So it's not really concerned about uses. It's looking to the form of new development and how that's going to fit into the existing community and what it will result in as properties develop. But the zoning code breaks those up into four separate areas and has different uses allowed within those. Then interestingly, the properties that are zoned CD or commercial downtown are small individual parcels that were carved out of the specific plan, but essentially are within the overall boundaries of the downtown. So as we started to look at this, we looked at, as an example, we looked at, A, is there really a distinction between some of the four different sections? The historic core versus the La Plaza versus the Northern Gateway versus the Commerce Avenue? Those four different areas of the downtown specific plan, and obviously there is, but do we want to be so specific in delineating what uses can go where when really the intent of that is to facilitate what the built environment's going to be as properties develop over into the future? And another interesting thing that kind of comes out of this is right now, if you're in the downtown specific plan and you're a restaurant and you want to serve beer and wine, you're allowed to do that. That's permitted use. But if you're a restaurant that's operating in the Oliver Shopping Center, you have to go through a use permit process to serve beer and wine. So again, stepping back, what's the intent of having that use permit or not required? And is it serving much of a purpose or a function by allowing a business that's not downtown to have to go through an expensive, time-consuming process to expand their business model when we know that retail industries in general are struggling? And so even though this is a restaurant example, restaurants and shopping centers benefit from other pass-by traffic. You know, you might go to a retail shop and then stop for lunch or those types of things. And so you get some synergy effects from that. And so we're looking at providing flexibility for our existing and future businesses to try to transition through this kind of retail uncertainty until we get to kind of what the new normal and equilibrium is going to be. And we do, as we talked about this, this is significant changes and staff and the consultants were aware of that. But we try to do it thoughtfully and in a way that would still maintain the character of the community, allow businesses to incrementally change if they're an existing business and try new things. But then we recognize if there's a problem, and I think Chair Moore's comment about the tasting room or the question about the tasting room. Some cities have very issue, they have a lot of issues with tasting rooms because that's what their whole downtown is becoming, right? In certain communities. But right now, it's not a problem for us. And so know that this, there's a little bit of iteration with this process and we may make a mistake or allow something that, oh, we need to pull back and we're going to now make that back into a conditional use or those types of things. We anticipate that need may come out of this process. But at the same time, we wanted to take a broad thoughtful look. And as we hear from some of the folks in the audience, I think you'll hear some of the individual stories that we heard that motivated some of these changes. And just getting back to my last example, I'll just tell you, so Redbird, if you all have been in there, they're making some changes in how they operate. They called us and said, hey, we want to serve more folks as more of a restaurant style. We want to have more seats. We want to serve beer and wine. And we said, well, that's going to cost you a few thousand dollars in a few months to even ask the question. But if you were located downtown, you would be allowed to do it. And so some of the changes are coming from these individual interactions with their current businesses that are just trying to make it in town in this uncertain environment. And we're trying to help them do that. And that's one example.
If I might chime in, to go further on the tasting room. That was a use which is already allowed and defined in the CG CI district CD, but isn't defined in the downtown specific plan area. So we added that land use to the downtown specific plan area of land use tables, but it was already in Table 2.3 for the other districts. So we're looking at expanding uses, but not changing the form and function and aesthetics of these buildings that contribute to the character of the town.
I would just, yeah, in that vein, some of these things are for consistency.
So I definitely appreciate that because my eyes glaze over looking at some of these. But in the past visions that have been there, La Plaza was much more visibly, I think, visualized as part of the downtown, the historic downtown area. So would there, and it is definitely an under, I mean, the, there's been some visions of that area that have never happened, the fractured nature of the land around there and stuff. But would that be the sort of thing to combine those two districts? Be a possibility in this discussion?
So that's an excellent question. And so one of the things that the consultants were tasked with doing is fitting these changes within the existing land use. Because had we proposed a change to the downtown specific plan or the general plan, then the sequo process that we undertook for this would have had to be significantly more robust and more expensive. Because right now, we're looking at these changes as within the scope of the existing downtown specific plan EIR or the general plan EIR generally. There was some individual analysis on the changes, including the negative declaration that's before the commission and out for public review and comment right now. But generally, these changes are within that scope. There is an interest in a phase two. And so Commissioner Hancock, I would ask you to maybe keep some notes on some of those other things because we will be asking for some suggestions as to how we can pivot after we complete this process to look at maybe an additional process that maybe is slightly more robust and maybe has a little bit bigger budget, I'm looking at the city manager, for some of the sequo work that would be required.
Okay, so the follow-on question, now that that's very visible on that, there's essentially on these permits, it's Table 2.3 and Table 2.4. So, and I've been chewing on this, trying to understand it and it takes a bit of time. Table 2.3 is allowed land uses and permitted requirements for mixed-use corridors and districts. So what on that map does that cover?
Excellent question. So that covers all of the CG district? Well, I'm sorry, this, this table covers essentially all of the zoning districts not in the downtown specific plan. Some of the changes that are proposed or the changes...
So just to come back, what is the downtown specific plan coverage area? I mean, I do have this on other maps.
Again, that gets back to essentially everything on the map that's highlighted on the east side of town. That's the downtown specific plan area. The rest of these changes affect these properties, but also those down east Cotati, the Oliver Shopping Center, et cetera. That's the CE zoning district.
But the study area doesn't cover...
And that gets to the point we made about some of these changes got broadened out as we looked at some of the equity issues and what really made sense. So again, this is what the consultants were tasked with doing with their initial effort. But as we started making these changes, again, it gets back to the Redbird example, should we exclude them from, from making some minor changes to the zoning code when we have, we know what they want to do and we know or we feel that it will be minimal in the impacts? Should we exclude them just because the initial contract didn't include that in the scope? And staff pushed and had that incorporated in an effort to try to broaden that out in very slight ways, in a way that would minimize, had minimal negative impacts and a lot of upside from the staff perspective?
Okay, so to follow on on that, we've got the west side, that is the mixed-use corridors and districts. And we have the downtown specific plan districts. They specifically looking at the downtown side, they could be aligned, is what you're So just the downtown specific plan could be aligned? Maybe another way of asking this is what is the benefit of having the different, within the districts, the benefit of having these different categories that are in there? So from the town planning point of view, and I have some of my own things where I think it's useful, but what is it that we're looking out for that are the negatives?
Well, generally, I think the industrial zoning district is a great example to use. Cotati has generally isolated its industrial area to the northwestern part of town. It's concentrated its industrial uses in that area. There's multiple benefits from that. First, you know, it minimizes impacts on adjacent uses if there's not a lot of residential next door, those types of things. It also facilitates providing infrastructure to those properties. You know, industrial uses tend to require larger amounts of sewer and water capacity, those types of things. It allows city staff on the public works side to kind of, to have some focused thought and infrastructure improvements in isolating those areas. Getting back to the specific plan, it was intentionally broken out into four distinct separate character areas primarily, based on community input, I think was the primary reason. And then looking at the general, or the gravising corridor, that was kind of seen as the catch-all general industry district. And with that, I know Dick wants to chime in.
I just want to make a kind of a high-level observation about the downtown zoning districts. You see some similarities in the land use palette in front of you. And where it made sense to accommodate one activity in one of those downtown districts and another, we went ahead and recommended it. But as you read through your downtown specific plan, the character of those districts in terms of physical form and historic character are very different. So understand that what we're doing here is looking at the land uses that are still subject to those character policy statements in the specific plan. Those have not been altered.
Okay, and I do understand that. I mean, I did use one of the businesses in the Cotati industrial area, a metal stamping business at one point. It was very exciting to go there and see my elements being stamped out, but I definitely wouldn't want them for a neighbor, you know, some big machinery that would be going and stuff. So the manufacturing side as well, I mean, I had another visit as a, as my own consultancy and stuff into Oregon called Valis. And we had a mixture in this particular unit, this business unit of brewery and electronic manufacturing. It turned out the electronic manufacturing created a lot of odors that were very unpleasant for the brewery. So that was an incompatible mix that was actually happening there in that particular. So how do we avoid those incompatible mixes? This is what you're asking for right now?
Well, that's absolutely the intent of zoning, right? And so as we've, we've brought forward these recommendations, we've thought about them through that lens. But you're bringing up a good point. One of the specifics is this artisan craft product manufacturing. And so we've kind of struggled with that because there's a lot of interest in that use. You know, the Barlow is a good example of something that is essentially that. But it's often seen as an industrial use. And so we tried to start to tease that into more commercial elements, given some of the retail issues that we've talked about and the fact that we're trying to let our current businesses have flexibility in how they operate and what they may do.
So in terms of artisan, is there a definition of size?
Artisan craft product manufacturing is specifically defined in the code. But I do not believe it includes a size in the definition.
Because I would think for a lot of these small businesses, if there's a small business definition for it, then it's a different sort of business. If you had a small business food and beverage product manufacturing, it's different than if it's a large cola factory or something. So that we only have one definition for food and beverage product manufacturing?
And that's an issue that staff has identified and we will hope to address. So as mentioned, right now, actually artisan craft product manufacturing is not even defined in our code.
And that's a perfect segue to one of the future action items that we have listed in the backend of this package is performance standards. A lot more care and detail has to go into prescribing what standards go with an artisan manufacturing use. Not only how big it is, but what kind of parking needs do you have? What, what kind of specific activities and noise levels are applicable? And is that, does that create a compatibility issue in the zoning districts where they're allowed? You'll notice that with respect to that activity, artisan craft product manufacturing, we've included it as a permitted use where it was minor use permit in the commercial industrial district. One of my favorite opportunities, the commercial industrial district, we don't have a large area, but we have some vacant properties and underutilized properties that are struggling. And to be able to introduce an activity that brings people in and yet creates business opportunities, that is product output, it has, it has the potential to significantly benefit that neighborhood. And that district is also one where we, we erred on the side of flexibility to accommodate local retail activity, warehousing, research and development. That's a key, a key category. In other communities, we found that R and D zoning has been tremendously successful because it creates kind of the larger space where you can have an artisan component and you can have a warehousing component behind it. And you have that flex space in a larger building. The CI district is perfectly suited to accommodate that. So we've introduced that here as a permitted use.
Thank you. I mean, I think there's a lot of other questions, but I should...
I have, go ahead. So just to start on this list, because it sounds to me like you guys went through a very thorough process in determining how these changes would be made. The ones that stand out to me, if I'm looking at this correctly, are those that were previously used not allowed and have since moved to some sort of permitted use. So if I'm, if I'm reading that correctly, previously would not have been allowed at all and now would be required to have a permit. And I just wanted to ask, kind of specifically for a few of these, what the thought process was there? So for instance, the storage, personal storage facility.
Page, book page?
Oh, sorry, on page, packet page 22. That was one example. Or on page 26, drive-through service. And some of these more specific ones, is this more of an opinion that we should, in taking feedback, that we should make this change? Or does it fit within some sort of standard that we already have that encourage us to
As Noah gathers his thoughts and insights, one of the things, again, I'd like to observe is that as you look down the list where you see yellow and you see some of these, these uses introduced, such as wholesaling and distribution, as, as well as going from use permit to permitted laboratories, food and beverage product manufacturing disallowed to minor use permit. The commercial industrial district, this is a mixed district that's separated from residential neighborhoods, that is industrial in character already. And it, the opportunity for compatibility, working well with that broad range of uses is pretty high. And so yes, we want to make sure we have sufficient development standards in the code and we want to spend some time on that. But in terms of, a place where we can add flexibility to accommodate those uses where they're not met locally at the moment, it's a, it's a great opportunity.
Okay, so...
That's where most of those are.
Okay. Because the example I heard about alcohol use permit being different downtown than from other areas, those are very tangible examples that make sense to me, kind of aligning our requirements. But these stand out to me more as, as a more of a significant change in what, what otherwise have not been allowed could now potentially be allowed in the community. And I just wanted to make sure I understood that. I'll give my opinion on that later, but I wanted to clarify it.
And that is correct. And so with regards to the mini storage, you know, the question is, do we want to allow mini storage at all, right? There obviously is a need for it, folks, folks use mini storage. But if we are going to allow it, we do want to have the ability to regulate it and we want to put it in the right place. And so this proposal only allows it with a full use permit, so public hearing with the planning commission, full review by the fire department, the building department, police department, public works ourselves. And then also only in the industrial zoning districts. It says if we're going to have those uses, that's the only place where they could go, subject to discretionary approval. Similarly, the drive-through... Similarly, the drive-through service being now allowed or proposed to be allowed with, again, a full use permit in the CI district, I think that's intended, that's an industrial commercial district, that's intended to capture some of the new oil change style businesses where you actually drive through to get your oil changed, it's convenient for some folks. But right now, if an oil change business came in and that was their model, we may not be able to allow it because it's not identified as an element to the proposal. We could maybe look at it through the lens of a auto repair business, but it just, this gets more specific to the various elements that someone might propose.
Okay. And then, so, kind of to take a deeper dive into that, when I'm looking at on page 23, theater, I think that we could picture two different types of theaters, maybe a downtown smaller boutique theater, or kind of a larger megaplex theater, depending on where it's located. And here I'm seeing a change, more major change on what's allowed and what's not allowed under CI. So, I wanted to just better understand for myself, when a change like this is made and then an opportunity does end up coming up for a business to come in, seeing here on page 21 that some of these requirements would now be fulfilled from director review and approval as opposed to the commission, is that going to change our ability to have more, you know, more of a, more of a visual or impact on seeing these things before they get approved and having the conversation and making sure that we're still a part of that decision?
So, the proposal to go from a use permit to a minor use permit absolutely does have that effect, in that the question starts off being asked to the director, so it's a director level decision. What it doesn't take away is the discretionary element of it, so it still allows all the various city departments to put conditions of approval on that action and specifically say, you know, if you're going to operate this, you have to be subject to these limitations, just like staff always brings forward. However, it does take it away from the full discretionary process that the planning commission, five individual members of the community looking at it, in a notice public hearing, that process is no longer formally required, except the minor use permit process does allow the director to elevate any decision as a minor use permit to the planning commission, with no change to, or no, the applicant doesn't get to be a part of that decision, it gets elevated. And so, using your theater example, if someone proposed a theater in the CI district, some of those, you know, properties that front onto Highway 101 or front onto Redwood Drive, maybe, that may be okay for a theater, even maybe a larger scale one. And they may be interested in doing that because they have some freeway visibility, those types of things. That large of a use, proposing a brand-new building, as it would take, staff would elevate that to the planning commission based on just the known interest that the community would have in that.
And are there standards on, on what would be elevated and what wouldn't, or guidance? Or is it really the discretion of staff?
So, I was looking at this earlier because I wanted to know also. And it doesn't specify providing standards or guidance. So, it says, you know, a use permit may be approved or denied by the plant, by the commission, a minor use permit shall be approved or denied by the director, provided that the director may choose to refer any minor use permit application to the commission for hearing and decision in the same manner as a use permit. However, I'm sorry, we were calling these staff level, which they are, but it is done at a public hearing. We still notify all the neighbors, we still do that process, and we hold a meeting typically in the conference room to let people come and speak. And any decision made at the planning director level is appealable to the planning commission.
Okay, thank you. And just one last question. How did you determine what would be recommended and what's optional?
So, when we started this process, we were looking primarily at the downtown specific plan in the CG district, the gravestine corridor. As we got further along, as Noah mentioned, we were looking at some other districts, namely the industrial to the north of the CG district. And so, when you see the yellow and the red highlighting in the land use tables, the yellow highlighting is, table 2.4, of course, is the downtown specific plan, so it has everything on the east side. And table 2.3, everything in yellow is within our strategy area, and it also includes the general industrial area, which is just to the north of our strategy area. So, we pulled in a few extra districts here because we thought we had a good opportunity to review those. But we tried to make it clear so that you can see what's in the strategy area versus what isn't. So, that's the difference between the red and the yellow.
If, I'll just add to that, if you look, all the yellow are within the scope of what they were asked to do. The pink are things that are outside that scope. So, those are some things that staff has pushed for, and the consultants relate, that's not within our scope, so they pushed back a little bit, and this was the compromise that we came up with.
But Noah brought this up earlier, there's also a continuity where it made sense in one context, Noah, I think correctly asked the question, well, does it also make sense in this adjoining area if it works? And so, we critically evaluated that between us, and we came to a concurrence.
Okay, thank you.
I have a couple other questions. So, on page 28, you have studios, art, dance, martial arts, music permitted for, in the historic core, and it's all permitted actually for all three districts down. And they were, they were under conditional use permits before. And I think one of the reasons why is because there was trying to get more retail downtown, and so they tried to restrict some of the non-tax-based, I should say, businesses in that area. So, I'm wondering, why is there the change in that?
So, I would just add, the consultants can speak to the why, but I would just say, as we kind of transition into this new retail, we're looking for activity generating uses as much as kind of the day-to-day typical retail uses to help create some synergy. So, if there's a studio downtown, you might stop before or after to get a coffee, or go out to eat, or maybe drop your kids off while you go and shop, and those types of things. So, we're trying to just look at some activity generating folks or use types, given that the typical retail store may not always be knocking on our door to open up.
Yeah. Oftentimes, this, this idea of complementary activities, we have differential peak demand periods, and where you draw people in to do more than one thing at a, at a specific location, tends to help expand the business day a little bit and make more efficient use of the facilities, the parking, traffic, all of those things.
Okay. The other one that I was looking at, this lodging, a bed and breakfast is permitted now, not with a conditional use permit. And so, I wanted to know why that was changed.
So, with a minor use permit, bed and breakfasts were added to the CD district. They had already been permitted in the CE and CG districts.
I'm talking about the HCLP and NG districts.
Sorry. Page 20...
Page 20, page 30.
Bed and breakfast throughout those downtown districts went from use permit to permitted.
Yes.
And the rationale behind this was that this in particular, based on our experience looking at other communities in downtown settings where smaller lodging facilities can be accommodated, is that it tends to support people coming and staying, particularly with a college campus nearby, and with the opportunity for retail activity. If there is a bed and breakfast present in the downtown, and especially a diversification of a couple smaller ones, for example, it tends to support businesses, it tends to create more of an activity level, and especially supports restaurants. And those, those uses, at least in our experience, are very compatible and tend to create a lot more business opportunity.
I might add that in cases where we found uses that promote basically walkability between other businesses, we kind of erred on including them. And if you have input on any that should not be in there, we're happy to hear that.
And there again, I'll just add, as it's come up several times now, to the extent that there are concerns about some of the things may happen with, let's pick on bed and breakfast, whether there's a parking demand, whether there's employee parking, we would then look to first the performance standards, development standards, to make sure they're adequate. And our first course of action would be to amend those performance standards if we need to, rather than to discourage the use itself.
Okay. And I have one other one that I think was already talked about, but the drive-through service. So, that, a lot of these, and I've been on planning commission for a very long time, so I've vetted a lot of these over the years where we, we suffered through whether or not have drive-throughs or not. And I appreciate having consultants come in and go through this. One of the reasons why we didn't do that is, is there's a lot of reasons, in sustainability, environmental, you can go, I can go down a list of things why we don't have drive-throughs in Cattati. So, when I see something like that, it's a little disturbing to me whether we have a oil stop or not that's, you know, compatible with that. We have one drive-through, it's Walgreens, it's there because if your kid is sick or you're sick, you can drive through, you don't have to go into the pharmacy and get everybody else sick. So, that was made in a long, long process of probably four hours of us sitting up here. So, that's something I really would like to have looked at.
I think that's a good comment.
Because that's one of those things that really makes our town unique, and, and one of the things, like you said, that we, we did a long process in doing. My only other comment on this, and I, like I said, I hope this comes back to us because I have more comments, is the reason we have a planning commission is to vet a lot of these things, and we do them publicly, and we do them in long process, and it may feel like you're here forever, but we try to vet everything and make sure everybody is heard and the whole community is heard. And so, when I see things that are just going across the desk, and I see more and more things that are going across the desk, and planning commissioners, or planning directors come and go in this town, not to say I don't like Noah, but we've had quite a few directors in my lifetime here. I can appreciate some things that are administrative, but the other things that need to be brought to us. We're a small community, people live right downtown, especially on our, our quarter where, and maybe you're not out in the industrial area, but you're in, you're fenced backs to the old Dos Amigos or wherever, and you will be impacted by some of the things that's now permitted, that you can't, outdoor dining, that's a permitted use, but you're going to be impacted, all those houses around there. So, I'm not all the way thrilled with everything being brought through that now circumvents the planning commission, because now we don't have a design review, and now you're pretty much getting us on our knees. So, so I'll be talking a lot more about this, and I'll be talking a lot more about this to the community, because I think at some point, like I said, I think there needs to be a balance, but what I'm seeing in here is there's a lot more discretionary process than I would like. So, those are my comments.
Should we just continue, questions at this time, or should we also be providing our feedback?
Well, I guess...
I want to make sure I fit mine in.
Go ahead, you fit, go ahead, because, and then we're going to open up the public hearing on this, after we, this was, this is a long process on this one.
Yeah, so, I, I, I support a lot of what you said, and I think that this is great to have this workshop, because it's allowing us to work through all this instead of having to review something and just approve or, or not approve it. I, the, the way I see it is if, I see the efficiency and the, it seems like a reasonable approach to take some of this, and rather than bring it through the more formal process to have the staff, the great staff that we have, to work through it as they should. If that's the case though, I think that there does have to be a more kind of stringent approach on what's actually allowed or not allowed, or what sort of permits we're comfortable with, because if we, if we lose that additional oversight, I think we want, I want to feel comfortable that, that there are more kind of boundaries on what can and can't come into our community. I, I had concerns with drive-through as well. I, as a mother of a one-year-old, there's nothing I love more than a Starbucks drive-through, but I think our community is only so large. So, as a commissioner, I would be very disappointed if something did move through that mimics that sort of thing and we didn't have an opportunity. And so, maybe it's also going back and looking at developing, if that's possible, some sort of standards of what does need to come to us, even if, even if it's a minor use permit now. What would, what the expectation would be that would still come to the commission for discussion and review. I think that the storage unit also is something I, I have, even though it's a mini storage, I have big concerns with that. I think, again, our community is very small, and while it's great to be able to fit everything in your community, I think we do have to rely on other communities nearby for some of that, so that would be a concern of mine, that I wouldn't be comfortable going what looks like an extreme to me of not being allowed to now having a use permit. I just worry about making that large of a change without some more discussion. So, those were the, the two that really stood out to me. I think some of these other ones, that being said, I, I are great. I, I like the idea of having more variety, because some of the downtowns I've seen or small communities I've seen that thrive have a lot of variety in, in their area. So, bed and breakfast, for example, I love that idea. But again, I want to make sure that we have an opportunity to discuss it and ensure that it's not impacting our community members, since we all are living in a very tight-knit town. So, that's my feedback on this particular toolbox.
So, going through this process, I mean, I do have some now coming up, there's some very specific questions, and I, and I appreciate it's a, on the sort of, so looking at page 30, on a lodging and hotel, or the HC, which would be the historic core, it would seem to me, I mean, there's big hotels and there's small hotels, but if somebody wanted to put in something down there, it would almost seem like that that would be a minor use permit. I would think in the, in the, I mean, we're looking early at around the La Plaza, can we bring in that intensity? And I like that walkability analysis. It seems like we've been doing, and, you know, we haven't really done, we've talked about it, but we haven't really done, what are places that, that people can walk to and make it very, very easy. I'm almost of, for some areas, coming back to the mixed-use corridors, what would be the problem with actually putting a lot more of these in, I mean, I support a lot of these that are coming through, the minor use permit changes, and again, it's size, but the food and beverage and product manufacturing for the CG as a minor use permit, and I know some of these have been requested in one of the letters, but the furniture and fixtures and manufacturing, again, I think it depends on size. If there's a small artisan style, somebody wants to do something, they're doing a specialty, they, and they've got a market for that, that seems to me it's applicable for a mixture of things. Immediately, somebody's going to bring in some big machinery, and it's, it's a different type of, I think, product, or different, different process. Again, the heavy industrial manufacturing processes seem like they, you know, definitely in the IG and need to be regulated in many more ways than one. But the light manufacturing, I mean, again, I can see that the CG could be a lot more flexible in that area, but I think we're also talking about that area being very walkable. I've been advocating, how do we get walkable connections out there? So, that would be my initial sort of assessment, but I do, I do think it needs some more thinking about page 26, going back again to the mixed-use corridors, I mean, equipment rental for... mean, equipment rental for the CG area, I mean, I guess there's different views of what that means, but if that means a drive-up place, maybe it's not appropriate. If it's something smaller, then it seems like it could work. I don't know, I mean, I, I do see, how can you get these smaller businesses that come in, but at the same time, we're not that pro a franchise, that somebody might want to bring in a whole lot of big equipment and trucks and things, so I may be fairly uneducated in what it means, those zones. Anyway, I think that's, I think we should open it up, I think we've been talking a lot.
All right, we're going to open this up. Anybody want to come and speak about Toolbox B? Jenny?
Thank you. Jenny Blake, a Qatadi resident. I may have missed this, but I'm wondering why East Qatadi Avenue wasn't included, given that there's the whole Rancho Qatadi shopping area, and the area around the Smart Station, and other retail and commercial parts of Qatadi. It seems that most of the people I've talked to have been more concerned about making sure that the businesses downtown and to the east side of the freeway are successful, before we start thinking about developing new businesses on the west side. I noticed there was a statement somewhere about quality of life, and improving quality of life by increasing opportunities for eating out and shopping and things like that. When I speak to people about what they like about Qatadi, it's very often that it's a small town, that it's easy to walk around, green trees, open space, walks along the creek trails, bicycling, it's nothing to do with more shops and more restaurants. We have a lot of restaurants already. So that word underdeveloped. To me, that's green open space, and I like it. And I know, I know I'm not the only one. And another thing that's really appreciated very much is the Valetti Ranch Farm next to City Hall. So those seem to be some of the things that people who live here in Qatadi value for their quality of life. And I'm wondering how can development occur without destroying habitat? I know we haven't got to that yet, but it's in Toolbox H, I think, but I'm wondering how that's going to be answered. I very much appreciated what Lisa said about the public process. I was a bit shocked to see the wording about the director being able to make decisions rather than the planning commission, no disrespect to this director, but as Lisa said, many of the decisions that have been made, that are now being considered constraints, were done in a public process, over hours and hours, or several meetings, with people discussing fast-food restaurants, big-box stores, drive-throughs, that kind of thing. And, and it's been necessary to have that public process, and sometimes there've even been ballot measures to make decisions about those kinds of planning issues in Qatadi. And then, I don't know whether this was listed in any of the opportunities that were looked at, but music seems to be something that's come up over and over again in Qatadi's history, having music as a central thing here. And then another thing is that when people have been discussing, what kind of business do we want to see, what could we use here, an answer that came up over and over again was a hotel, and now we're getting a hotel. That's great, but I'm not convinced by the need that people in Qatadi have for all these other businesses on the west side. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny. Anyone else like to come up and speak on this? All right, seen none, we're going to move on to Toolbox C. Anybody else want to come up? Come on up, absolutely.
We live in Santa Rosa, we're new to Qatadi, and we have a business that we want to create here. It's a, it's a consignment store, but it's a very high-level consignment store. We've been in the estate sale liquidation business in Santa Rosa now for about seven years, and we've felt the need to help our clients service farther beyond the sale by having a period of time where they could consign some of their best items that maybe didn't sell in the sale. And there's also a big collection of antiques and collectibles that have high value that we've wanted to be able to present. So we found a lease space here in Qatadi, and we're subletting from the gentleman who owns the whole complex. It's right by the park, where the old Miller Driving School used to be. And so it's a great space, but halfway through the process, in my naivety, I didn't, I just trusted our landlord that it was for retail, but the code actually says that we're in this sort of gray area about what retail is, being that, you know, is it a thrift store, you know, they didn't want that image in this area of junk out in front, and, you know, like, lower-end things. So we're proposing an asset to the city by having a beautiful store where people can come and shop, and not have to pay top retail for things. And also, as Noah pointed out, we're not in competition with Amazon, because it's an ongoing, ever-changing inventory of one-of-a-kind beautiful things, with a bit of an antique and collectible angle, also a percentage of the things in there would be. So we're just sort of in a limbo, and we're hoping that you might be, you know, positive about changing the code in that sense. There's also the angle of, angle's a bad word, but the asset of, we have a huge client base, and so people from Santa Rosa, and all the other neighboring communities come to our sales, know us, know our quality and our reputation. We would be bringing a lot of those new people into this downtown corridor. And I understand, yes, you, about the rural side and the homes and that part of Qatadi, but this is more the, the image of the up-and-coming Qatadi is how I see it. I love Qatadi, it's such a cute little suburb, and it has a great little downtown, and it's kind of like a little stepsister to Sebastopol. And there's a really nice consignment store in Sebastopol also that's thriving right by the Barlow. It used to be an old Chevy dealership, I think. So that's who we're modeling after. Anyway, I don't mean to ramble, I just want to put out there that I'm hoping if we can make this happen, that we would be an asset to the city, and we would bring a real positive and a classier, you know, element to what used to be a kind of a rundown driving school. So.
Thank you. Does anybody else like to come and speak? Okay, we're going to move on to Toolbox C. And actually, you know what, we're going to take a five-minute break, and then we'll move on to Toolbox C.
The purpose for that is to separate the consideration of land uses from designer view. The designer view process is not designed to judge the appropriateness of land uses. That's left to Toolbox B and the land use districts and the specific plan policies. Rather, the designer view process is intended to ensure that standards be met, and that adequate development thresholds are complied with. And so, for example, in Section 040, Number Six, Purpose of Designer View, rather than talking about recognizing the interdependence of land uses and other things, the language now reads, ensure that site planning contributes to an efficient and interconnected system. We're still looking at the same designer view components, we're just making sure that land use is separated, so that those discretionary judgments, as we were talking about earlier, with respect to land use, appropriately take place with the use permits. Then secondly, later on in this section, you'll see a couple changes where, for example, the Community Development Director is specifically called out. Under applicability in subsection B, a project action determined by, rather than the commission or council, the Community Development Director determines whether there's an exemption. That's a rather technical determination, it's based on facts in the code, and it's not really subject to a judgment call. It's a matter of looking at the code and saying, is this application subject to designer view, or is it exempt? A certain type of sign, for example, might fall on one side of that line or the other. So where there is discretion about the, wrong word, kind of a Freudian slip, where there is judgment involved in determining whether a design of a building, or a design of a sign, or the layout of parking lot meets the standards in the code, that's the function of designer view. The uses that go into the building to be accommodated is a function of zoning, and whether there's a use permit control. And so we're trying to make sure that those two functions are separated, so that the discretionary SEQA evaluation, in particular, can follow the land use side of it.
And I would just add, as we were talking about this earlier, the intent of these changes is really to take out kind of the mingling of use versus design, and really clarify that at the beginning. And then if you look at subsection B1, it says, currently says a project or action determined by the commission or council to be properly exempt from designer view. But there's no process for a project to be brought before the commission or council for a determination of being exempt or subject to designer view. I mean, that, that just doesn't exist. And so it is much more appropriate for staff to make the determination as to whether a project is subject to it or not, and then bring forward the projects that are subject.
If I might add some clarification, Chair Moore, you had commented earlier on page 21 about how there were, on Toolbox B, decisions being made by the director or by the planning commission. And your comments regarding this minor use permit versus use permit is certainly heard, but this deals with simply the determination usually made by your director, that's an applicant coming forward, proposes a use, you're saying that matches this land use, and the requirements are, it's permitted in this district, or it's a use permit. There's really not an opportunity to bring a use before the planning commission and say, is this permitted in my district? All the cities we work in, this is typically a decision made by the director. And then, of course, it's appealable to the planning commission. So I just wanted to point that out, that that, that's not dealing with the minor use permit versus use permit aspect of the changes, it's simply the determination made by the director as the project's getting off the ground.
Thank you.
I think that's it. Toolbox C is pretty short. Do you guys have any questions?
For me, it's pretty straightforward, you're just cleaning up language, basically. We don't see the projects that necessarily need design review that come before us, so that's always been something that, I mean, you're just cleaning up language to me when I read this.
Yeah, it makes sense to me, the way you explained it earlier. I think that what we're saying is that everything has a process, and each thing should live within the process that it fits within, so that makes sense. I just want to make sure, I, I just, since it's so detailed, and we don't look at the details every day like staff does, are we losing anything here by removing some of this language? Is there, is there a level of review or scrutiny that isn't happening somewhere else, or shouldn't be happening, that we may be losing by changing some of this language?
Yeah, I would just say, we're definitely not losing anything to the separate, the second element of your question, as far as like, critical elements that need to be looked at. Absolutely not. We are losing some kind of cross-pollination within the designer view process. So right now, if you had a permitted use come forward, but that was building a brand-new building, so it needed to come to the commission for the design to be reviewed. Currently, the ordinance allows the commission to kind of throw in some concerns and maybe some other elements of use, even though the code says that use is permitted, because our current designer view standards, or the ordinance, does not cleanly separate design and use. And frankly, as I mentioned earlier, that's just a field day for lawyers, just to be frank. And so if the intent is design, and we've said, those uses are permitted, but we want to look at the designs of the new buildings, then the code should, should embody that. And that's what this is doing.
If I could just indulge me for a second as an example, because this truly is important. I want to operate a new sit-down restaurant in one of the commercial districts where it's a permitted use. Under the language that's on the books today, as Noah's just referenced, where land use becomes a component of designer view, that, based on some of the landmark legal decisions that have been handed down at the appellate level in California, that opens up SEQA, and this becomes a time-consuming and costly exercise for a use that is permitted anyway. And so what we are trying to do, particularly with respect to that example of a permitted use, is allow the application to come forward for review, once it's determined that it is subject to designer view, and it would be as a new building. But make sure that the focus is on the building character, the, where it's placed on the site, making sure that parking and access work well, and that the building is compatible, solar access is protected, all the things that you would normally do in designer view, but without questioning whether that particular use is appropriate or not, because that's already been decided in the code. And that distinction makes an enormous difference as to whether you, you drag an applicant through the SEQA process unnecessarily.
So I, I agree as well, I understand that. I go through design processes of my own, it's really with groups, software, and various other things, so this is different. But I, you know, going through each of these individually, yes, number six, ensure that planning contributes to an inefficient, so cleaner language. I can definitely see taking the word "use" out of designer view because of its specific meaning when it comes to land use. So I'm, I'm good with that. I'm not clear, maybe this will come up later on, so I'll just leave it right now, but I think, I appreciate it, I appreciate the cleanup.
All right. Anybody like to come and speak on Toolbox D? All right, seen none, or C, I'm sorry, that's C that we were at.
C.
C. We're moving on to D.
So Toolbox D, the changes are again relatively simple, but in this case, based on the feedback that we've received in talking with property owners and prospective developers on some potentially real projects in the downtown area and along the Gravenstein Corridor, adding a little bit of flexibility in a mixed-use project makes a world of difference. So for example, as we look at the first change under section B, mix of uses, both in the CG district and the specific plan districts, rather than prescribing a 75% floor area occupancy by the commercial use on the ground floor, what we're doing is encouraging a residential use on the second and higher floors in vertical mixed use, and then on a horizontal mixed-use project, which is cost-effective in this market, by the way. The predominant mix of commercial uses, the language now says, is to occupy the street frontage. So we've added flexibility, moving away from a hard 75% to a predominant visual commercial element. element. And what this in effect does is it creates opportunities for plazas, for access to residential on the second floor, and for somewhat more flexibility on the design side. It may seem like a relatively simple change, but based on the feedback we've seen and the potential projects that Noah has looked at, for example, and you have recently seen yourselves in the way of applications, this is very helpful.
We also thought it previously was a little confusing. It previously read 75% of the building floor area, and that, you know, kind of leads you to think that within one structure, it has to be three-quarters this and one-quarter this. This allows a little bit more flexibility in terms of using an FAR, floor area ratio, over the entire site.
And I would just add, specifically for subsection B, that first statement for the CG zoning district, I actually thought that was a typo when I first read it. And I would just, when was the last time you saw a mixed-use building that was three floors of commercial and one floor of residential? You know, it's not typical, and so I'm not sure if that was a typo, or if the ratio was inverted, but that's what it read to me. And so, in speaking with some folks who are interested in developing, you know, that's just not a typical standard ratio of commercial and residential, and it makes a problem, a project very problematic to have it pencil, especially in today's commercial retail market. So we are proposing to invert that, allow one floor of commercial and three floors of residential, as an example. And then further, under subsection D1, the requirement to specify down to the foot the depth of the commercial buildings was just somewhat awkward, given that some of the properties aren't even deep enough to accommodate that. And so we just wanted to get that specificity out of the project and allow a designer to come up with something that fits the site very well.
So I have a question on this. You mentioned something about it's going to be most, commercial is on the street side. Now you said that that's what, so this zone is commercial Gravenstein Corridor? I don't really see that happening on 116, that you're going to have street-side, like, retail. It's a highway. And so I'm just curious, what was your, why was that, what was your comment on that? I mean...
For clarification, previously, this section was applicable to just the CG zone.
Okay.
So what we've done is we've changed the inside-of-building requirement for the CG zone, changed the definitions, and now it applies to the CG zone and the downtown specific plan area.
Okay. All right. That's a little more clarification, because I'm just trying to wrap my head around it.
This is another example of a change that we kind of picked up along the way, because we thought it made sense after reading through things.
Okay. Yeah, that makes more sense. Thank you.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. So this is just more, I'm interested in kind of your expertise on mixed use, because it's something I've noticed as a community member, but I have no research behind it. And that is that oftentimes I've noticed in communities throughout Sonoma County, that sometimes when we're talking about vertical mixed use, you'll see two or three floors of apartments or condos that are used, and then just kind of empty business space down below. And I'm wondering if, in your experience, that's common because the majority of the use is being filled with residential, and the business is not necessarily a priority, or doesn't need to be, or, and if that would be resolved, if there was more of this emphasis on, I think, it's clear to me the 75% is a little hard to work with. But I'm, if we're looking at this and how we're going to change it, that's kind of one of the thoughts that comes to mind for me.
That is such a good question. And what you've done is you've put your finger right on to the economics issue. In Kattati, in time, we would expect to see, as your downtown specific plan encourages more vertical mixed-use development. In communities where the retail environment is maturing, and hasn't really reached its potential, it's very difficult to support the cost of retail on the ground and residential above, because it's a more expensive construction method, oftentimes requiring structured parking and elevators, both costly components. And so what we're seeing in this market, and not just Kattati, but surrounding communities, is a separation of commercial and residential, where on one project site, you'll have a combination of both in compatible arrangements. But the residential will be in a separate building that is somehow, from a design standpoint, connected back to the retail through a plaza, through parking. One of my favorite examples is, not here in this county, but is in Contra Costa in Lafayette, where in their downtown, a great deal of additional residential has occurred in higher density, but behind the retail that fronts on Mount Gabriel Boulevard, their main street. And walkability, we brought that up several times, it's a hallmark of what they've tried and have, I think, successfully achieved there, where that residential has nicely designed as it is, it's visually separated from the thoroughfare, the complete street with the landscaping and the bikeways and the broad walkways, by the retail. But they're still connected by plazas and driveways. And really, that's what we're trying to facilitate here, not trying to increase the amount of housing, but to make that housing both affordable, and especially to accommodate it, so it can, if you will, underwrite the cost of the retail to bring it onboard upfront. Where you see those vacant storefronts in multi-story buildings with residential above, it's because the rent structure for the retail, in many cases, is too high, because it hasn't been absorbed into the overall cost of the project in a way that the housing can, if you will, underwrite the lease costs. And that's what we're trying to achieve, is a delicate balance, where we get as much retail as we can, but in a feasible context. And so there's this balance between how much housing, how much retail, and then how do you design it to make it cost-effective?
Okay, thank you. That's helpful. Also, under C, on page 36, I was just a little bit confused about what this change means, and maybe it's a minor change, but where we take out maximum and minimum density requirements, and then we take out of the applicable general plan. Can you explain that in more detail, or?
The theory behind that is that your general plan can change over time, and it's also, development is also subject to your specific plans. So we're simply saying it has to be consistent with those documents. We're not trying to, otherwise, you're stating that it has to be applicable or consistent with the general plan and the zoning, and we felt it was better to kind of switch that around, verbiage-wise, where it simply has to be consistent with those documents, which of course have the same maximums.
And the measure of density or intensity is somehow spelled out, is sometimes spelled out differently in a general plan. We talk about floor area ratios, for example, in planning documents, rather than just residential density. So when you're looking at a mixed-use project in particular, you look at the ratio of total floor area to side area. That's called floor area ratio. And that's different than just looking at density. And so as Michael's suggesting, is the policy language in the general plan looks at both of those, what we want to do here is ensure that that mixed-use project meets all of those policy standards in the policy document, and whatever other prescriptive standards in the code, rather than using this section of the zoning ordinance prescriptively to lay out some different set of standards.
Okay. That makes sense. Thank you. That's it. Neil?
Right, I think you've answered one question there. On section B, mix of uses, you've got the FAR of 0.25. What is FAR?
Floor area ratio.
Okay, that's what I thought, I'm sort of taking that down, so...
So a floor area ratio of .25 would mean that on a 100,000-square-foot parcel, 25,000 square feet, or 25% of it, has building. You'll find in higher-intensity downtowns that floor ratios of 2.0 or 3.0, Santana Row, for example, are not uncommon, where you have three times as much floor area as you have lot area. So it's just a way of...
Vertical development versus horizontal.
It's a way of comparing the total amount of development to side area.
Okay, so within that, the same as a minimum area that is commercial, and it'll be at the discretion of the project. So isn't this what we actually did on the Two Elder Lane developments recently? There's been commercial along the front, and then behind it has been the housing.
That's exactly correct.
And then on the northern side, the western side of Elder Lane, was an assisted living facility, and again, frontage.
Correct.
On your figure 4.2, you've actually said you're removing the 75-foot minimum, and then in the picture itself, it's still got a 75-foot minimum, I think.
I think that's a formatting issue we need to address after we get the direction finalized.
Okay, I just...
It's a good comment.
...know that it takes more time to take out photos.
You are correct.
I got another question on, and this is really, perhaps recognizing, it's not strictly the nature of what we're talking about here, but we've got performance standards under lighting. Should there also be a lighting efficiency standard if we're making modifications here? So that we, I know we've talked of hearing about in other places, where the lights basically can be triggered in some way, there's a lighting plan, so...
So that's generally the case, and addressed with the building code, because that is absolutely a requirement for new development. If there's an interest in trying to do that for exterior lighting, we could look at that, but that also has a potential to becoming a security concern, so we have to be thoughtful about how it's looked at. But generally, lighting efficiency standards live in the building code.
And you'd also want to look at uniformity in how you apply that citywide, not just for one type of use in one location?
Correct, but we do want to think about that from an energy usage, just we're trying to reduce the carbon footprint, but a different form than this one. Okay, I'm good on Toolbox D.
The only thing I have on that, too, is on location of residential in a mixed-use project under section four, I should probably use refuse, recyclables, and compost. It's not, it's none of the things that you did.
It's a reference to section D4, and the new state criteria for three-stream waste management, so refuse, recycling, and compost.
Under...
Nice catch, thank you.
Under SB 1823.
Are you an expert, Madam?
Yes, since I'm dealing with that right now. All right, so we have anybody like to speak on Toolbox D? Seeing none, we're going to move on to Toolbox E.
Okay, I'm going to go over this one. We made one very small, minor change. This has to do with a case where you sell alcohol, specifically in a restaurant, where you don't need a use permit. So if we go back to Toolbox B, you know, with all the changes to land uses, in your downtown specific plan, you're allowed to have alcohol sales as an incidental use for a restaurant. We've also added that to table 2.3 for the rest of the districts. We wanted to change the language here to, simply, you're not going to have a use permit to post if it's just an incidental alcohol sales, and that's why we made this change.
So it's a consistency, language consistency issue?
So if we took away all Toolbox B, we'd still keep this, because it's in table 2.4 already.
And now you're introducing a use. Well, don't take me away. I'm just...
All right. Any questions on that one? Anybody like to speak to Toolbox E? Seeing none, we'll move on to Toolbox F.
So the consultants are looking to me because I kind of pushed for some of these things. So Toolbox F is essentially bringing in some new definitions, based on some of the comments, we may further modify these, so look to see some additional changes brought back in the final package. But as we talked about, currently, our accessory retail or services is basically not as specific as it could be. And we're making changes to this definition with the specific intent to allow an existing business to experiment a little bit beyond what their specific zoning criteria is. So I'm going to use an example I've been using a lot, and I'll ask Damian and the consultants to forgive me, because I don't know how many times he's heard me say this. But essentially, if you, imagine yourself as a t-shirt retailer. You can sell t-shirts, all those things, but given that Amazon and all these other businesses are potentially eroding your business model, you're looking to do something more creative that'll get people into your business, but may not fit currently within the zoning rules. So what if you want to start screen printing, to make custom t-shirts, maybe have t-shirt parties, those types of things? Well, right now, screen printing is seen as a production use that lives in an industrial zoning district. What this change does is it allows you, as a retailer, to expand your business model to allow up to 25% of either your floor area of your store, or your grocery seats, to try something different. And so that would be, the t-shirt example would be, you know, you generally sell t-shirts, but now you want to start making them, you set up a screen printing carousel in the back, or maybe even in your retail display location, and people can come in, maybe have a t-shirt making party, they can maybe order custom print t-shirts from you that you can make onsite, and maybe in a quick way, to incentivize folks to come to your business versus just firing up their cell phone and ordering one on Amazon. So I've been describing this as it's intended to allow a current business who's in a silo of zoning that only allows a certain element or use to experiment and try new things without having to check in with us, if it's a very small or relatively minor change. Once you get beyond 25% of your floor area or your grocery seats, according to this definition, you are now becoming a different type of business, and you could seek to find a location that's in an appropriate zoning district. So we wanted you to, or we wanted that flexibility built into the code, so our current businesses could experiment and be flexible. Separately, the retail display gallery is kind of a new business model, where you go to a place to buy something, but they may not have the merchandise there. So it allows somebody to use a relatively small business footprint to, what I've seen is there's places where you can get custom clothes made. So you walk into a place, they will scan your body, and you will get a clothes made exactly for you. I think Tesla sells cars this way. You don't actually drive off the lot with your Tesla, you go in there, you look at, you order all the features, and it gets delivered to you. So this is trying to be forward-thinking, the retail display gallery, and create a land use that we know is coming, and have it defined in our code, so when someone walks up to the front counter, we can answer that and say, "Yes, it's allowed," or "No, it's not," et cetera. And then, as we alluded to earlier, we made minor changes to the tasting room definition to just clarify that it does allow a variety of things, not just wine and olive oil, but also beer and spirits. That's the intent of these changes, as I mentioned, based on some of the feedback we've heard today. We'll probably bring back some additional definitions and slightly modified definitions, but that's the intent of these.
I'll just add that the retail display gallery is an example of where we're trying to be out ahead of an applicant coming in, and your director not being able to make the determination that it's consistent with an existing use, and having to have that applicant come before this body just to determine that. So we're trying to spell out uses, so that they're, they have strict guidelines in place already.
Any other questions on that? So, say you have a tasting room, and you're doing, for wine, and then wine and beer. So you have a wine and beer license, so spirits, you would have to have a license, you would have to have an ABC be able to do that. I mean, that's all... I mean, that's all, we still have to go by the law of that.
That's absolutely correct.
Okay.
And there are significant regulations about tasting rooms from ABC.
That's what I kind of figured. So I'm just curious, on the retail display gallery, this is kind of like when I was a kid going to Montgomeryville, you know, doing the catalog, walk in. My mom would order all of our clothes off the catalog and then we would come pick them up three weeks later.
That's a great analogy. That's exactly what it is.
Yeah, I made you myself, but that's, that's what we did when we were kids. We ordered off the catalog, so...
And so things are kind of coming full circle where they may not have all the inventory and every size in the back. You say you want that, they'll send you your size. But they, it allows flexibility again in the type of kind of retail experience that folks have.
Okay, yeah, those were all downtown, downtown Cali and Santa Rosa.
We added that use as well to the land use statements.
I don't have any questions on this, but I do want to say that I love the idea of this forward-thinking. I think it's a way for us to keep small businesses to come in. It's really appealing. I'm excited. I hope that we can see more of this in Catari.
So I agree in that the one other, well, one other area that I've heard about also is small home-based kitchens that I think have been allowed. Is there a space again for something within here that would allow, somebody's got a specialty little business they're trying out, can they use this definition for doing it? I mean, I know it impacts other types of things, but it impacts health issues, but generally I've heard, I mean, at least going around little cheese factories in southwest England, the principle is that people have been doing something for a long time, not too many people have been killed by it or have been registered, you know, or had problems. So if it's a small impact, potentially small impact, then is it something that doesn't necessarily attract a lot of health codes? But obviously, that is a, you know, the small business has to make that work.
So I think you're referencing the cottage food?
Yes.
Yeah, so that's state law that exists. Our consultants were tasked with looking at the commercial districts, so that actually, what the state law says is folks can use their own kitchens to make these products. They don't have to be made in a commercial kitchen, and then sell them retail. So that's allowed now, but it's not something we captured with this project, given that it's focused on the commercial properties. I do think that's a good point in that we could amend our residential zoning districts to capture that as an allowed use in a residential zone, and we will have lots of opportunity to look at our residential districts based on the state legislation that's been coming down.
Right, what I was thinking of is some of these small businesses like this, where they've got a main use, but can they also offer, if there's somebody doing some home cooking locally, also offer that as part of?
Absolutely.
That they can, okay.
And that was part of the idea, too. Another example I've used is if you're a restaurant, but you happen to make really good jam or something, you could sell what you sell for food as retail as well. Or if somebody else had something, so a homemade product, you could sell it in your shirt store. You could sell Neil's Jam in the shirt store.
If anybody wants...
And I was also thinking, I thought if you did say like your thing of t-shirts, if you wanted to do like a popcorn machine or something and bring people in and say, you know, like we're having some little snack while you're here, that would be something that could be allowed in here? Okay.
It's an interesting theme because one of the things that we've tried very hard to do is look at these kind of accessory activities within principal businesses that are complementary. And to the extent that we can make the experience richer for shoppers, they'll spend more time, and that means more activity, and it all works together.
Yeah, I mean, there's nail places now that let you have champagne. I'm sure you spend more money at those places. All right, Toolbox F, anybody like to speak on Toolbox F? All right, we're going to move on to Toolbox G.
So Toolbox G does not involve any code changes, any regulation changes. This is purely informational at this stage. What we did was a quick review of available programs at the local, regional, and state level that provide funding for economic development programs. In our experience around the Bay Area, working with other communities, many of them have tapped into, and I believe Catari has even tapped into a couple of these already. A substantial amount of money is available particularly for small to medium-sized communities to help underwrite the cost of developing these programs, the cost of paying for infrastructure in some cases, to help with affordable housing in particular, several programs targeted in that area. Many of these programs, even the California Department of Fish and Game has programs that will help to offset mitigation costs. And so rather than belaboring any of these in particular unless you have questions, the purpose of this exercise was to kind of list those programs that in a snapshot in time were available. What we're suggesting to staff and to the commission is that this is a source of money to help carry you further to the next stage in terms of helping to underwrite costs for your programs and for some of the development programs, private development programs you want to see happen.
Anybody have any questions?
So isn't this an ongoing evolution? I mean, these are, there's a lot of informational pamphlets out there. I mean, there's public side of things where you can help on something, energy efficiency and things, and then there's staff or city. So some of this seems to be mixed up between those two. Wouldn't we want to separate them and have something that is facing the public?
Yes, well, by intent, some of the MTC ABAG programs, for example, are designed to help underwrite the costs of economic development construction, whereas at the same time, they help underwrite the cost of doing the sequel analysis and help to pay for some of the public capital infrastructure improvements that have to be built to make the projects come along. And in that area in particular, I know that your city manager has struggled over time trying to help not only the Public Works Department and traffic service levels, but to improve access to properties, both traffic efficiency and safety. These programs, the funding runs out and they go away periodically, then sometimes they get renewed, but some of the programs have money specifically earmarked for capital improvements like roadway improvements. We didn't drill down too deep in any one of these, but several of these have potential applicability, and it takes a little bit of elbow grease to get into them to find out if they're a good fit for some of the things that have been recommended.
I guess I'm asking the question, isn't there a portion of this that would be just for the public facing side, and that that would be issued as an educational pamphlet if the city was to do it?
You are correct. That is something that could be done. I think a good example would be the Transformative Climate Communities Program, and those are kind of intended for individuals to pursue those types of grants, whereas others, and maybe even the urban greening, whereas others are very much specific to municipalities. And so as we, or should we move forward on kind of trying to create and dig into what's available more for these? Some of them might translate into pamphlets that we could just inform the public about that then they could take advantage of to do projects around town.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Great. All right, anybody like to speak on Toolbox G? Okay, seen them, we're moving on to Toolbox H. Is H our last toolbox? Yes, it is.
H is a toolbox, and again, you're not seeing anything in your packets and the way of specific recommendations here. This is an informational toolbox, but it is perhaps one of the most powerful things that we kind of waded into and yet didn't quite complete as part of this program. We are within the Santa Rosa Plain where the United States Fish and Wildlife Service has identified both critical habitat and the presence of listed federal species. There are mitigation programs that have been adopted as part of the mitigation plan for the Santa Rosa Plain. Some of that affects these properties within our strategy area. That's easy to say. The next part of it gets much more complicated because the potential for occurrence of suitable habitat that is accessible, not paved already, usable by some of these species, and whether there are wetlands in particular present or not varies tremendously between properties on both sides of the freeway. In some cases, there are barriers to the movement of species. In other cases, it's been well documented, property by property, that where there's existing pavement and existing buildings, if you reuse that site, you're not triggering a new impact. All right, we spent time both looking at properties on a very superficial level as environmental planners, and then we consulted with one of the biological consultants who's been involved with many of the properties in the study area over the past 20, 25 years. That's Monk and Associates in Walnut Creek. By the way, we as a company have worked with them on other public projects that have involved sensitive habitat issues. And what we've learned is that delineations of wetlands have been prepared and submitted to the Army Corps of Engineers on a number of these properties, identifying where wetlands exist. Those delineations that have been verified by the Corps, it's a two-step process. You first define where the wetland is by qualifying criteria, the biologist does that, and then the Army Corps verifies that information, essentially accepting it. Knowing where wetlands are and how much of a site is encumbered by these wetlands is a very important indicator of whether there's a substantial constraint to economic development. This isn't just good and bad. It represents guidance on how projects can avoid wetlands armed with that information to develop a sensitive project that will move smoothly through the entitlement process. And that's the objective of gathering this information. We talked with one of the property owners on a fairly large piece of undeveloped property where wetlands were present, but they were isolated wetlands, and it was clear because there was a verified delineation that there was an understanding going into it as to how much of the property could have footprint impacts, and that began to shape the thinking of how a mixed-use project might work on that site. We have recommended that this program be advanced in a future step to the point where we assemble those delineations, we catalog that, and we go out with the biologist to do field verification on properties that don't have constraints, that are, for example, paved or have what's called hard pack, where you don't have the ability to support either wetlands or special status species. And if we had that information available to applicants throughout this study area, it would, I think, help tremendously in understanding how to efficiently design a project and entitle that project. Just as a side note, as those of you who stay on top of changes in legislation in Washington may know, there's been a rule change under the current federal administration that is literally changing the landscape of regulatory control by the Corps of Engineers, at least on isolated wetlands. But from a practical standpoint, it's our opinion as planners, at least, we're not trying to play lawyers here, that the state and regional governments will pick up the slack where the Corps is unable to assert jurisdiction and will have the same set of issues at the end of the day in California. So regardless of whether the rule changes under the Code of Federal Regulations goes into effect or is challenged later this month when it would normally go into effect, we believe these constraints are here to stay. And we also know from the little work we have done on site with these properties that there is a substantial amount of land available to develop, that if avoidance were practiced, there would be no impacts. And to the extent that impacts can be minimized through an understanding of where the constraints are, it helps to facilitate getting that project moving forward expeditiously. One of the biggest problems in the development industry that we're facing in our study area, and we heard this from property owners, is we don't understand going into the application process what our impacts are going to be, what the mitigation costs will be, and what you're going to require of us. So to the extent that we can use the information in Toolbox H and expand on it and catalog it and make it available to you, the commission, and to applicants both, so that everybody's informed, we think that that will help expedite projects. That's a simple overview, but there's a lot of detail here.
Hey, can I ask a quick question on that? On the mitigation part, the last time I think I dealt with CTS, it was three to one mitigation in that property, in that area? Does that still stand?
Well, the mitigation ratio is in part a function of how close the resource is to the project site, how far separated it is, for example, and that has a bearing on the potential effect on the species, whether there's take of species, for example, the loss of an animal that's listed. The Santa Rosa Plain contains very prescriptive standards for mitigation, and it does apply to a portion of this study area. But again, there are cases that we are aware of where properties, your hotel site that's coming, for example, is a good case in point, where much of the site is a gravelled surface, a hard pack, if you will. A better example yet would be where there's a parking lot and a building that may be repurposed. Well, with repurposing of that where there's no new development or grading, if you will, where there's a wetland or a grassy area that could support an animal, where none of that would occur, if we can make the determination upfront that that site, if those boundaries are respected, would have no new impacts, then that makes the job of designing the project and the success of that project much better.
I would just add that that is, three to one is a ratio for occupied habitat. Unoccupied habitat has a different ratio, and then I think just standard wetland habitat is a different ratio. So there's, depends on essentially the quality of the environment of the site that's being impacted determines the mitigation ratio.
Okay, thank you. Mia?
So I've got to admit, this portion of what you did here was very difficult for me to understand and did cause me a fair amount of thinking and somewhat loss of sleep on it. So I'm not an expert on the Santa Rosa Plain's plan, but I have been following it. If I look at, just to take a really high-level view, if I look at other regulatory areas that have gone on, particularly the clean water side of things, the standard that's been used, if you've got a new way of doing something, the standard that's been used is, is your new way of doing it going to actually improve the benefit, be beneficial for the clean water standards? So I think this particularly was in the Arcaeta Marsh when they wanted to reuse that marsh to be a biological, have a biological function. So is it your intention here that with this informational toolbox, you'll be actually supporting a better implementation, as has been described to you, of some of the historical problems that have come up?
That's a fair question, and I have to confess that you're about two steps ahead of me. We're not that far along in our analysis. We're not that far along in our analysis, where we're looking at knowing that a project's going to affect a wetland or a resource, how to manage that in a way that improves the environment. Haven't considered that yet. We're at the rudimentary stage of trying to differentiate between where there's wetlands, where there's habitat resources, where they don't exist, to help guide projects so they don't get in trouble once they're in process. If we can impact a positive design of a project to avoid these resources as opposed to stumbling into an impact that has costly mitigation, as some of these property owners have already painfully experienced, then we're using our resources more efficiently. That's what this is about.
Right. And I understand that intent from a business development, but I would just point out the historical side of the sort of, if you like, the environmental trauma that's happened both in the Santa Rosa Plains and elsewhere, that's well documented. So certainly with some of the language that you've used, that doesn't seem to be supporting the process. I mean, I think I was talking to some other people about related issues, the Vesco ordinance in Sonoma County, where it's basically looking at the vineyards on a much bigger scale and saying, can we actually delineate the wetlands? And they've used, I think, some LIDAR processes across the county, where they've been able to actually say, okay, so we have some wetlands that are valuable in here. How do we, essentially, it's so that the vineyard owners aren't going to impact that because there have been some very stiff fines for some of the people who have filled it in and then said, oh gee, sorry, you know. So I think if we can, I mean, if there's a process that can actually say, okay, this is what is going, this is what is happening in this area with the wetlands, and that actually documents them, so it's clear to people what the, that there's a benefit there, and then the Santa Rosa, I mean, essentially, there's going to have to be permits, as I understand it, I'm not an expert on that. So I think if that can actually be visible, but as I understand it, it's a very blunt tool at the moment. And so there, I mean, there's a school pathway that's being planned, I think, on the other side of Cattati, and that's being put off because it's basically not going to happen in the time period when there could be, you know, migrating species. So there's a set of biological constraints, I think, that are happening around. And I mean, if it supports that, I think that's a good idea. But if it's, if it's, the language in here, to me, just seems to support an idea of getting around, doing an end run around what the process is currently. And some of the, you know, the interviews, I've got some questions later on about your, I think, attachment D and the way that you've, or one of the other ones. But anyway, I'll just put that, for that, I'm finding it very dense to understand what this is about. And I understand the intent from the development side, but I think there is also a context. And if it supports that, what is attempted by the Santa Rosa Plains biological aspect, then I think that's good. Thank you.
I just want to close quickly by saying that nothing that we've contemplated or looked at here is intended to conflict with or circumvent state, local, regional, or federal legislation to protect that environment. Individual projects that do have the potential for effect have to go through a rigorous permitting process, and the standards are incredibly detailed, as we've been saying. This is more about information gathered and harnessed to help design projects.
And I would just add, you know, any project that develops on a property that's under the Santa Rosa Plain Conservation Strategy has to comply with it. But as Chair Moore identified, the Plain Strategy has a variety of mitigation requirements based on what's actually being developed and the quality of the habitat that's being impacted. And so how staff looked at this, and just this map is a good example of kind of the variety of available information and studies that have been done on sites that are subject to the conservation strategy. How staff looked at this was an attempt to kind of take all the available information and in some instances, maybe even hire folks to further evaluate specific properties. So everyone that's involved in the process has an understanding of where those higher resource areas are, or maybe where the lower value resource areas are. So then that way, if someone that owns a property is considering developing, they can have at least a more informed perspective on what the development costs would be, in addition to all the actual construction. If they have to do three to one mitigation versus one to one, then that's a very different number for them to put in their pro forma. That's how staff took it. And we see it as specifically valuable because so much of the downtown specific plan, where Cattati has identified as wanting to grow, also is in the Plain Strategy area and does include some wetlands and some that could be preserved and enhanced through a development process that then could be a community amenity. But it takes the knowledge to understand where those are and what those, the quality of those are to help make those decisions.
That is true.
Thank you, and I hope that is made clear when this is revised.
My first question is just a clarifying question on this particular toolbox. So I think you had mentioned in the beginning that this is informational. So how does this differ from the other toolboxes? We, it's not included in kind of our overall decisions? Or how are we involved in this?
That's correct. So the other toolbox, the Toolbox B is a good example. That's actually a code change that's before the commission. We want you to kind of noodle on it and tell us specific things, you know, absolutely no drive-throughs and, you know, no mini-storage. Yes, we like theaters in these locations. Those are the specifics. This is a conceptual information toolbox that, if supported by the commission and ultimately by the council, they could put additional, essentially, funding towards for staff to hire the biologists and do some of the evaluation. So there's nothing about this that's pending. It wasn't in the full scope of any actions to be taken, but it's things that Loke and Associates identified as optional things to do to further address some of the things that came up through their interviews.
It was just such an important issue, and there was so much lacking information in the development community that we felt it important to try and get a handle on it.
Okay. That's helpful. And I think what that means is that I can give my opinion then on how this looks to me and maybe what we could keep in mind moving forward. So the way I'm looking at it is, I know that right now we are talking about economic development. And so I realize that sometimes the way that maybe we communicate this in here does tend to veer back toward businesses, new businesses, development, growth. And to me, maybe that's where some of the wording stuck out, that of course, we want to make sure the emphasis is still very much on protecting our environment. And in cases where we do have this additional information, there may be opportunities where we don't have development or growth because we're more, we have a more robust database of information that helps us understand that. So what I'm seeing here is, and I appreciate the clarification, or the kind of the talking us through it, because when I read through it as well, I was a little confused how this plays into everything else and not being an expert by any means on this side of things. What I'm seeing is that there's a larger, there's larger guidance around how we do our work, and what you're saying is that we can be more site-specific, we can be looking at smaller areas to determine what makes sense and how, if we were to develop, we would develop more effectively and in a more environmentally friendly way because we have more knowledge about those areas. Is that correct?
Informed and environmentally friendly. Yeah, I'd like to add that word because that's the key here, is getting that information in a usable form to applicants so that we don't accidentally face a situation where a very complicated environmental analysis has to be done with very expensive mitigation that could have been avoided or minimized at the front end if only they had been informed.
Okay. That makes sense to me, and I appreciate that. Again, a lot of this, I think, is focusing on providing information upfront so that people aren't coming in and putting a lot of time and energy and money into something that doesn't end up working out. Some of the language does stand out as concerning, and I don't know that necessarily should be, so I'm just going to ask and kind of read it if we're looking at page 44, section D. Just the way that we're explaining this, that I think what we're saying is mitigation would still require Corps permits, but it would, this discretionary review would not be as time-consuming as the local sequo analysis. So I think we're saying, what I'm seeing here is that we would be avoiding some sort of sequo analysis, and I just want to make sure that we're not, we're not avoiding important steps that we should still be taking by implementing this additional data set that...
Under no circumstances would we be circumventing compliance with those standards if through a better understanding upfront, we know where the resources are and we can practice avoidance. Kind of the rule in environmental planning is avoidance stupid first and then mitigate where you must. I mean, that's the colloquial term that is in the industry. And so to the extent that those impacts can be avoided by careful site planning and understanding where the resources are, then the need for complicated studies goes away or is minimized, at least, depending on the circumstances. Every one of these sites is different, and you can't really put them into neat little boxes. But the more information we can compile, the better picture we have, the better understanding we have as to where to encourage projects to go because the resources will accommodate them.
And this might be much further ahead than where we've even gotten to at this point. But from kind of a timing perspective, once we gather that information, how often is it refreshed?
Well, yeah, we've, several of us have learned over the years that wetland delineations, you know, they're only good for five years, and even that may change under these new rules. But yeah, conditions can change over time. Understanding of species and the movement of species through information that's compiled in the databases changes. So we, I don't have a good answer for that. It's not a once and done situation. But if we were to have a good, clear understanding at a snapshot in time in 2020, and we were trying to guide development over the next four to five years, I'd say that's a pretty good balance. Five years out, might have to refresh that information.
Okay. And I wouldn't want to stop us from doing this just because of that, that we don't necessarily know what the next step is. I'm just curious if you have information on that. I think that what we can gather, the more information we have, the better. But it's something to consider that, you know, once we get all that good local information, we're going to want to think about how we continue to gather in the future. So, does anyone have any questions or concerns? We have a good example in town at Park Meadows that has wetlands on site.
I think that there are, you know, concerns about the wetlands just about everywhere. And we started this process as an academic development program, and identifying, you know, the constraints is one of the biggest pieces. And especially in Cattati, the biological issues are, you know, first and foremost, right up front center. So we wanted to have an ability to kind of document where things are. This isn't a plan to, you know, circumvent or avoid anything, but it's more to point out where there are problems and where we need to anticipate, you know, addressing those problems with development as it goes forward.
Jenny?
Appreciated that explanation. But I, it was all about the wetlands, and I'm not a biologist, but my understanding is that the tiger salamander only use the wetlands for a couple of weeks in the winter when it's pouring with rain to breed, and that the rest of the year, they're estevating or underground in burrows, and so their territory is much bigger than just the wetlands. I emailed a friend of mine who's an expert in California tiger salamander earlier today, and he wrote, remember that California tiger salamander are state endangered under California ESA, and that California Department of Fish and Wildlife mitigation requirements can be more restrictive than U.S. Fish and Wildlife. And he also said, 165 adult CTS were trapped at the current lows, suggesting that all undeveloped lands within 2,200 feet are potentially occupied by CTS. The city should assume that all undeveloped lands are CTS-occupied and mitigate impacts. And there's a ton of information, I don't know how detailed and specific, but for the last 20 years, I've been kind of collecting the volumes of information from people who've been looking at these issues in the Santa Rosa Plain since, well, since before I came here 20, 24 years ago. So I think the information's there, it's just maybe not in the development community at the moment. Thank you.
Ms. Jen? All right. So what's next?
So let me speak next to the pre-zoning action that is recommended as part of the program. And you have in your packets the draft of a ordinance as well as exhibits that identify the three properties together representing roughly 15 acres that are to the west of the existing lows and to the north of the residential project on the east side of Alder, which runs north of the Gravenstein Highway. This exhibit on the board shows the proposed pre-zoning. Again, the property is classified in your general plan for commercial use, but it has no pre-zoning. Pre-zoning is helpful because it provides notice that upon annexation, the intent of the city would be to use the property for the purposes outlined in this, in this case, the CG zoning district, which is the same zoning district that joins this property to a portion of the south and to the east. These are underdeveloped properties, and they join other very important, larger pieces within the Gravenstein Corridor area. The only action that's contemplated here is a pre-zoning. This, again, would have the effect of automatically being the zoning upon annexation if and when annexation is undertaken. And we've identified annexation as a possible next step, as a future action. But again, right now, all that's recommended is the pre-zoning consistent with the general plan.
Anybody have an issue with that?
You're talking about Attachment D in this discussion? Or just in this general?
Yeah, just looking at the zoning map, basically, where this piece of property is, which is located.
I know, it's been discussed in various places.
This is the one I have.
Right, right.
It's directly north of the Cattati Commons.
Right, right.
So it's in the CG?
It would be in the CG. So right now, if this map shows, it's actually a notch in the city limits of the city, it's in the jurisdiction of the county. However, it's in the city's urban limit line, city boundary, and is identified in the general plan as CG.
Okay.
And there's a potential, or there's an owner there, Cattati Vincas Collective? I think on one of these diagrams, there's a...
Yeah, I believe that's correct. We tried to identify the ownership of the parcels, and that's what we were given.
Is there any outreach someone to that?
So Monahan Pacific also owns the largest portion, which is one that fronts on the Alder. And so... And so Tom Monahan was in the room earlier. We have been discussing this with him, and he is fully supportive.
Okay. But the other owner was not?
We have not. We were going to get feedback from the commission, send them a notification if there is a recommendation to pre-zone them. But again, it doesn't actually change anything with regards to their property currently, and an annexation process would have to be undertaken in order to bring it into the city, and that's full public hearings, involvement, all those things.
And out of those properties, there's 13, 14, and 15 is what they're identified as. So there's three separate property owners that are there?
There are three separate parcels.
Parcels, sorry.
Again, we think two of them are owned by the same party, Mr. Monahan.
I believe he owns the ones that are to the west, though.
Yes.
So the pre-zoning would be a good action to advise all property owners of the intent in the future without taking any concrete steps at this time.
And we certainly wouldn't want to leave out one property that would otherwise create an island. There's state legislation that says you can't do that.
Yeah.
I think that's fine.
I think it's fine, too. It doesn't really change anything for us at this point unless there's any annexation that's going to be happening soon.
I think Monahan Pacific understands, or Tom Monahan understands, the area very well. So there shouldn't be any surprises there for him from what you've been identifying with all of them.
If this were pre-zoned, and if that program was implemented, then down the road, either the property owner could initiate annexation through a landowner petition, as it's called, or the city could initiate annexation through a resolution of the city council. Two ways to initiate an annexation of uninhabited territory, that is, properties that have fewer than 12 registered voters.
And I would just identify that LAFCO has the ultimate authority in annexation.
Yeah, I don't know where LAFCO was with Renner Park. Where you get fits around.
I think we're good with that, so.
So the only other item in your packets is the resolution related to the initial study and negative declaration. We, as I said in my opening remarks, tried to look very carefully, both individually at the changes that are in front of you as recommended action items at the time you take this up, but also how these things interplay with one another, that is to say, the cumulative effect of all of the changes. We didn't see the potential for any of these action items having environmental consequences that reach the level of significance, particularly because they don't create development. They simply streamline, for the most part, the process and allow projects to come forward that would themselves still need to go through the environmental review process, unless they're exempt projects, certain defined projects are exempt.
Can I ask a question on that? And that applies to that piece of property if it was brought into Cattati under the pre-zoning?
Okay, so when looking at an annexation, the act of pre-zoning is simply establishing policy. It doesn't create a change.
Right.
When the annexation application comes forward, it triggers a whole series of issues under the California Environmental Quality Act, many of which are unique because of the Cortesi-Knox-Hertzberg Act, the annexation laws of the state. And so you have to look at agricultural use. You have to look at effect on disadvantaged communities, if there are any. There's a whole series of, whether there's Williamson Act contract, for example, whole series of issues that have to be explored. We did not get into those issues because we weren't required to do that at this time. But were annexation to be undertaken, then right at the beginning, all of that analysis would have to take place.
So you're looking at the NEDDAC. Are we looking at this tonight, page by page, or do you want us to just go through it?
So staff, first one to identify that we are at 10 o'clock, and it requires a unanimous vote of the commission to go beyond 10.
Well, that depends on, are we going through the whole NEDDAC?
And so I'll just add, this negative declaration is in the middle of the public comment period. We will not be bringing it back to you until after the comment period ends. It's worth noting that a negative declaration only requires a 20-day public review and comment period. Staff posted this for a 45-day public review and comment period in order to allow kind of the volume of information associated with the economic development package to be considered in context with this. Essentially, it's a lot of information. We wanted to give the public and the commissioners a long time with it. So we went to the maximum comment period required, and that's for an EIR, which is 45 days. That's published, posted with the county. It's on the website. Happy to answer any specific questions if folks in the public or the commissioners have any. But we are not looking for specific initial study negative declaration comments this evening, other than just broad brush process generalities. If you have some specifics, we're happy to answer them. But this will be brought back as a part of the overall economic development package for your recommendation to the council.
And we'll be able to comment at that time?
Yes, however, if there's significant comments or concerns that are raised at that time, that has the potential to require it to be brought back to the commission if it requires significant revision, all of those things. So if, as the commissioners or the public identify things that are of concern, it would be appreciated by staff to hear them during the comment period so we could revise the document and have a more responsive document brought to the commission for review and recommendation when we come back in March.
Okay. So the question for the commission is, do we want to do that now, or do we really want to do the NEDDAC? If you have comments, lots of comments, you can do it in writing, or you can do it now?
I'm happy to end now.
Okay.
I haven't got a lot of...
You don't have an early warning.
I haven't got any questions on this, though.
I just wanted to clarify, so if we, because I know we kind of generally spoke about our opinions on some things, but if we want to make it clear, we should put that in comment, in email, essentially.
Staff would really appreciate it. Only send it to staff. Obviously, we don't want to create an issue with meetings, but generally what staff has heard is many storage and drive-throughs should not be in the code as a permitted use at all. Consider expanding food and beverage, artisan craft product manufacturing, and maybe even some other light manufacturing into the Gravenstein Commercial Corridor. We'll obviously be thoughtful about it, and it'll be presented as an option for the commission to include in their recommendation.
And an MUP, I think.
With a minor ease for it, absolutely. Maybe even be thoughtful about some broader allowances in that district, potentially breaking out a smaller boutique hotel from just a general hotel and maybe creating different decision processes for that in certain districts. And consider looking at the definitions of some of these land uses to make sure that they fit the intent of where we're trying to go with these allowances, and that's based on the input we heard tonight.
Sure, we can go through the NEDDAC. It's fine. I don't have any questions on it. I read it all the way through, so.
Okay.
Neil?
I don't have a good understanding of it, so I understand what we're doing as we're changing some paper definitions at the moment. And as I understand it, that doesn't impact the EIR, the NEDDAC, but it's certainly, it's a process to understand some of this. I guess the one question I do have a little bit on here is that we say that there's less than significant impacts on the air quality, but most other things, there is no impact, and particularly on the biological resources. So how does that weigh out? How do we get some impact on some aspect of an air quality?
So with respect to air quality, your general plan contains standards for thresholds of significance that are consistent with the Bay Area Air Quality Management District's SEQA thresholds. And the expectation, as we've gone through all of these changes, is, is there the potential for intensification of land uses? Yes. But the changes, it's very difficult to quantify those at this stage, number one. But qualitatively, the extent of changes in terms of increase in vehicular traffic movement, increase in construction activities, and construction-related air quality emissions, and then operational emissions over the life of projects, those changes are minor and incremental, very difficult to quantify. But there's nothing we've seen that would suggest that we're bumping up against a threshold, either for construction or operational impacts in air quality. These are relatively minor changes, and each of these projects has to go through its own environmental clearance, where it's looked at individually and in relationship to other projects. That's a short answer. We did not conduct a detailed modeling of air quality emissions because it was literally impossible to quantify, given the fact there are no defined development projects before you.
And I would just say, we've gone past 10, so we need a vote per the bylaws.
Oh. I'm okay with going past 10.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
I forget, we have bylaws, though.
Thank you.
So anyone else on the NEDDAC to do any comments? If there are some, I think I want to go through it a little more closely, and I'll email some of my issues for that, too. Anyone in the office, audience, like to talk about the negative declaration? Okay.
And I would just say, as you look at these and you look at the environmental lens, also be cognizant that staff and the consultants found that some of these changes are also consistent with the downtown specific plan, EIR, and the general plan, 2015 general plan, EIR. So those two are the umbrella over this negative declaration.
One other thing I would like to ask is, I know normally we give, like I give my packet to carry. I'm going to hang on to this and just go through it one more time and really, as I said, I think we had a lot of good comments tonight, but I think there's probably more that needs to be emailed, specifically of what we're looking at. Okay, I think that was it. So we're going to move on to reports by staff. Thank you. Gentlemen?
Thank you.
Thank you for staying. We're going to do reports by staff. Everybody can stay.
I'll just say, staff has nothing to report this evening.
Wow. Okay, reports by commission?
I went along to the planning conference that happened at SSU, and that was very good on wildfires. So a lot of the information on wildfires, there is thinking that's going on about basically how to harden structures. The core of the issue that's being discussed and coming up in a number of forums when it comes to wildfires is that it's structures that burn. So can structures be hardened? And there's many different ways of looking at that. The other area that I've been paying attention to is that there's an electric bike program that's been approved for Sonoma Marin. And so I'm building up a little bit of an advocacy for this area, just looking at how are we going to do it between Cattati, the station, and SSU. There will be a technical program that I think the county is going to drive, isn't it?
That's correct. It's being administered through SCTA, but we will have bikes at the smart station available and likely a location downtown for them to be parked at. They're e-bikes, and it's a pilot program, I think, for three years.
And so is that SCTA and Marin? Because it's combined.
It is combined, but I think it's being administered through the transportation districts for each county.
For each county. So there's 300 bikes that are being planned to distribute, between electric bikes between Sonoma County and Marin County. And I think there's an opportunity just in this area of considering that there's 2,500 students that change over each year with SSU, and is there some small percentage, you know, just in terms of what we're doing as challenges for climate change, is there something that can be brought in?
Great, thank you, thank you. Items received after the general were posted. We have the letters right here that we got, and so we're adjourned.
Thank you very much.